Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals, August 16th, 2017 meeting. Per the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, we are being audio and video recorded this evening. Our first public hearing, scheduled to begin at 7:00 PM, is, what, 14-194 Main Street. It's a special permit request. Chris, if you can read the notice of hearing, please?
Notice is hereby given in accordance with Chapter 40 of the Massachusetts General Laws and any amendments thereto that a public hearing will be held at the Zoning Board of Appeals, Room 124, the Norfolk Municipal Building, this Wednesday, August 16th, at 7:07 PM for the following. Rockwood Realty, LLC, for a special permit pursuant of MGL Chapter 40, Section 9, as amended in Section I, 7B of the Norfolk zoning bylaws to allow the conversion of a pre-existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling or to mixed business and residential use. Property is located at 194 Main Street, Accessors Map 14, Block 49, Lot 14, in the B1 zoning district.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Quiglieri, who's doing your presentation tonight?
Good evening. Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. Tonight, we have a special permit application in front of you to raise an existing single-family dwelling and construct a duplex dwelling in accordance with these Norfolk zoning bylaw for a special permit. As in your packet, we have attached a plan, which is up on the board now. On this plan, we're showing conceptually a septic, some drainage for the access driveway, parking, and the structure itself. Really, you know, in taking down the older, somewhat dilapidated dwelling and constructing the new dwelling, which we've submitted a picture of as well, we feel will be enhancing the property. One quick point is that we wanted to just note that we do have the access drive coming up on the left-hand side of the driveway in case we ever need to continue access to the back for any reason. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Questions from members of the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, the house and the garages are going to be raised? Both are going to be raised?
The dwelling and the garage is going to be raised. That's correct.
The dwelling and the garage, okay. And the access road, you're saying, is going to be the existing access from Main Street will be the same coming in?
Yeah, the driveway itself is going to come in through the same curb cut. We're going to take along the same way, and there's going to be some areas in which we're going to regrade and possibly reshape the driveway itself. Once we get to the back, we're going to construct it as shown here.
Okay.
Why is this a zoning matter?
It's required by a special permit to construct the duplex dwelling.
Oh, sure.
I-7B is a special permit that's required to convert a pre-existing single-family to a two-family dwelling.
Got it, okay.
They need a special permit to do this.
Okay.
Jamie, has the Board of Health weighed in on the septic for two-family?
No, we haven't submitted it. We've done numerous perk tests with the board out on site, or with the representative from the Board of Health, but no, the septic design has not been submitted to the Board of Health.
And it's going to be two two-bedroom units, so it's going to be a system capable of four-bedroom?
Four bedrooms plus Norfolk requires a 50% increase in design for residential houses. The system that we're showing there, we believe, is more than capable of handling that requirement.
Okay. Did I see you had a graphic of the exterior?
Yes.
Can you pop that up, please, Amy?
So, the garages will be facing the back of the property? The garage will be facing the?
The back of the existing building?
Yes.
Yes, yep. The garages will be facing the street, but yes, they'll be facing the back of the existing commercial building. That's correct.
Okay. So, I'd be looking at, as I pull down, I'd be looking at these?
This would be exactly, yes, sir.
Okay.
Are we familiar with what's there now?
There's an existing single-family home.
No, just don't recall the structure.
Yeah, it's a single-family home behind Bork's.
Yeah, behind the Bork's.
Yeah.
Is Bork's like right in this location here?
Yeah, at the end, at the left end.
Bork's is in front of the? Do you want to show on the map where Bork's would be on that drawing?
Sure. The Bork's building is right here.
Oh, okay.
And Bork's takes up, I believe, this part of the building.
That corner, left corner.
Any other questions?
You're going to, what's the driveway, asphalt?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Class, do we have any, we don't worry about any setback measurements or anything like that?
Nope, it's in the B1 zoning district. So, it's all right there. And more questions? Anything else that we need from these facts and any type of questions? I'll go through the criteria. Let me open it up to the butters or interested folks. Any questions from folks who are here for the hearing? All right, seeing none, let's go through the criteria worksheet. And the first one, my God, Al, who did, who wrote this?
Now, we know he won't admit it. I think I've seen his handwriting before.
The use must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. Residential use is in?
Allowable.
Allowable use in the B1 district, and the proposed duplex is in harmony with the? Purpose. Purpose. Intent. And intent of the district, of this district. Number two, the use is in an appropriate location and is not detrimental to the neighborhood and does not significantly alter the character of the zoning district. The current?
Use.
Use is residential with? Accessory structures? Accessories, accessory structures. The proposed location of the duplex is in?
Keeping.
Keeping with the character of this district. Number three, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. The proposed plan identifies all facility, all?
Facilities.
Facilities.
Necessary for?
Necessary for the?
Habitation.
The what?
Habitation.
Habitation of the proposed duplex. Wow. The proposed use would be detrimental or offensive, the proposed use would not be detrimental or offensive to the adjoining zoning districts and neighboring properties due to the effects of lighting, odor, smoke, noise, sewage, refuse materials, visual, or other nuisances. The proposed use is in?
Is residential.
Is residential, and therefore will?
Contain.
Contain no or?
Or.
Deminuous lighting, odor. What's after odor?
Smoke, noise, sewage, refuse.
Smoke, noise, refuse.
Visual or other.
Nuisances. Number five, the proposed use would not cause undue traffic congestion in the immediate area. The proposed duplex and?
Means of?
Egress. Egress and egress will have minimal impact on traffic as we? As use will be slight. As use will be slight. Number six, a proper site plan has been filed for approval with the planning board. That is not applicable, oh, no, excuse me, that is attached, not applicable to the, it is applicable, and is attached. And the use and our purpose is consistent with the 1992 master plan, and as most recently updated, the master plan contemplates this project as in allowable use. Can we condition this that I'll go back to penmanship school?
I'm not going to argue with my Italian grandmother, though.
I'm not going to.
She's a very good tutor.
I'm not going to argue with your grandmother.
Al, what's the building, what's the siding going to be on the buildings?
Hardywood.
Hardywood?
Yeah. These are the same, that building you saw, Pedro, was approved by the DRB from Valley Street, too.
That's the exact building that's on Valley Street. So, every piece of trim, roofing shingle, siding has been approved by the DRB. It's the identical building.
The trim will probably be AZAC or something.
AZAC, yeah.
Is each, each side going, how wide is the garage doors going to be on each side? Do we know?
The garage doors are 16 feet.
Okay. You know, one of the projects we're looking at now, they were talking about instead of single garage doors, is doing two garage doors to keep it more consistent with the character of the area. One of the comments from an architectural review was to put, instead of a single garage door, double garage doors, more characteristic of Norfolk. Is that a, is that something we can?
Well, on a single-family house, maybe, but then you'd see four doors on the front of this, and it would sort of look garagey.
Something, I mean, you'll be talking to the planning board, so I mean, something to think about. Just some, you know, just, again, one of those comments that they made with regard to the project that's actually going to be done at 25 Rockwood Road was one of the comments as to single garage doors, as to big, single garage doors.
And they've done that at 106, 108, and with those condominiums, they've done, instead of one big door like yours, they've done two smaller doors, which we think looks very attractive.
I mean, I like the windows at the top, but just, and I like, it looks like you have the hardware that gives it the look of a barn, but just something to think about. Okay?
Okey-dokey.
Thanks, Al.
Just a suggestion.
Yes.
Okay, do I hear, see any more comments, questions, concerns for the applicant? Okay, let's motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:17 PM for Rockwood Realty, LLC, for the special permit pursuant of MGL Chapter 40, Section 9 is amended, and Section I, 7B of the Norfolk zoning bylaw to allow for the conversion of a pre-existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling or a mixed business and residential use. Property being located at 194 Main Street, Accessors Map 14, Block 49, Lot 14, in the B1 zoning district.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
No, we'll just deliberate it.
We'll deliberate later.
Yeah. Deliberate later.
Okay, who's up to bat? 7:15, yes, 7, we can begin the second public hearing. Fisher and Company here. Dan, you want to come on up?
I'll.
All right. Hit the bell? All right. Can we, Chris, can you slide down a little bit, Bob, slide down a little bit so that Dan can get up in here?
Get another chair now?
I'm going to bring another chair here. I'm going to bring, we're going to.
Take mine. Here's your chair.
These are the chairs, the Titanic.
Yes, I know. That's from home. You know it.
Good. Can't wait to come up to join us, too. Do you want to pretty much go by this outline for tonight?
Sure.
I took one minute.
Yeah, I like this, this came up very handy. Okay, good evening. This is a continuation of the comprehensive permit, 25 Rockwood Road, Village of Norfolk. First item tonight is the ZBA's Traffic Peer Review Consultant is going to provide a short bullet point list of the open items that were discussed at the hearing, and the applicant's traffic engineer will produce and file a response letter to this. So, who wants to begin?
Jason Plood of Beta Group. At the last meeting, we had a lot of discussions about site distances, trucks, different types of counts, and collecting additional speed information closer to the property site where the bend of Rockwood Road is. Some of these concerns and requests were made by the public. We supported them. The board then asked the applicant if they were okay with it. The applicant said sure. So, just, you know, we had prepared a letter to outline what the outstanding concerns were. One of the items was, it's still hanging around, is should they collect counts on a Saturday? The reason why that this could be a concern is because the town doesn't have any traffic counts out here on a Saturday, Regional Planning Commission doesn't have any counts on a Saturday, the state doesn't have any counts on a Saturday. So, the applicant's engineer has given their opinion that a Saturday is not critical. I would like to advise the board based on facts, not just on opinions, but some engineering, judgment, and supported with facts. What I had recommended to the board at the last meeting was if you do not ask the applicant to count, and I'm not talking about counting every intersection within their study area, but even when they went out there and laid down a tube on Rockwood Road during a Saturday, during a weekday to be able to collect the additional speed data, why didn't they do it on a Saturday? They had that opportunity, they chose not to. So, what I suggested to the board was if the board feels, this is up to you, if the board feels that the Saturday does not carry a lot of traffic on Rockwood Road, then that's okay, we can let it go. But I would like you to make that decision, because I cannot make that decision for you and give you that recommendation. The second item was that they did go out there and they collected additional speed information that was closer to their site driveway. And the reason why this was really a twofold kind of concern was that it kind of related between site distances and speeds. It's all about safety. So, they collected additional traffic, speed information, observations in the southbound direction, not in the northbound, but just the southbound direction. And they were able to find that their speeds that they collected were pretty consistent with what they had found on their two previous attempts, one further to the north, one further to the south. So, we're okay with that. The one issue at hand, though, is that on their previous sight, sightline plan, they showed that if you were a car in the driveway looking to your left, so that's to the north, it crossed into an abutting property. They've been able to revise that plan so that it's no longer looking across into someone else's property to the north. However, they're still showing that it crosses to the property to the south. And at the last meeting, I had recommended that if that is the case, and they continue to show that, and that is true, that they need to have some kind of a visibility easement. A visibility easement is that agreement between the two property owners so that the abutting property owner to the south does not plant, build, construct, anything within that area that crosses into their property, that someone needs to be able to see looking out from their driveway. You know, you don't want to limit the sightlines out there, so if, in their, their August 14th, 2017 letter, does still show that it's crossing into the property to the south, so I really advise the board that a visibility easement is going to be required. And then the, the last item was about the trucks. So, trucks that turn right in and right out of the driveway cross over the WLS Center Line. State guidelines say that based on this type of roadway conditions, characteristics, that that's okay on a temporary basis. And as we discussed at the last meeting, we had, we discussed how you're not going to really have any trucks turning in and out of this driveway because it's a residential area, other than during construction. So, what we had recommended was that as part of their traffic management plan, that they come up with some kind of safety measures, almost like flaggers out there to be able to, that's just an example, that's not specific for this case, but that's an example, that a flagger would be out there to help notify motorists that are on Rockwood Road of trucks turning in and out of the driveway. In their letter, they have identified that and that accommodations would be provided within the traffic management plan. So, ultimately, the only real item here is the sightlines to the south. We just need to make sure that some kind of an agreement is made for visibility easement between the two property owners. If not, then they really don't have the site distances that they're showing.
Okay, thank you. Do you think you want the applicant to respond to that now, or how do you want to handle that?
I would have, I guess I have a question for Jason first. So, the, the sightline deficiency that you're referring to is with respect to stopping sight distance or intersection sight distance?
Intersection sight distance. So, that for the stopping sight distance, that means that your car out on Rockwood Road, looking at any object that's, that's kind of within the roadway system curb to curb?
Yeah.
To make sure that nothing is going to be in their, in their path, in their travel path. So, what they did was, and they did this correctly, was that they measured their stopping sight distance from a car on the roadway to an object on the side of the road in case it kind of came out like a taillight of a car rolled out in the street. The intersection sight distance is when you're the car in the driveway trying to look out to oncoming cars, and that's where the sightlines cross into the abutting property.
Okay, so it doesn't cross into the north property?
It did on their last revision, but on the current one, it does not.
How were they able to fix that?
Well, what they had done on their previous one was they were trying to show, and I believe it was to address a request that you had made, was how far can they actually see? You know, not just based on the speeds that cars are traveling at, but how far can they actually see? And based on that, they were crossing into the abutting property. So, this time, what they did correctly, by the way, this time, was that they showed what they could achieve by meeting the observed speeds and not crossing into the property to the north. So, they did that correctly this time. The other time was just almost like a, you know, if nothing is planted there or grown there, or no structures are there, this is what we can achieve. But they can meet the minimum required sight distances by looking to the north without crossing into an abutting property. To the south, they cannot. But to the north, they're okay. They're showing it to be okay.
And this is based upon the speed of, that they're using, which was the 33, was it?
33, correct. And I agree with their speed observations, how they were conducted.
Okay.
I agree with the manner that it was all generated, and I agree with the sightlines that they, they are showing or reflected in their plans.
And one of the open issues from last time was whether or not we should have speed data collected at the driveway, since there was some, some suggestion that that might, that speed might be a little bit faster.
That's right. And so, they had gone out there again.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's, there's so many different methods on collecting speed observations. You can use radar devices, you can use tubes in the roadway, and you can do something called the floating car method, where you're actually in your car, traveling behind other cars to see how fast they're going. All are accepted traffic engineering methods. This time around, they were able to collect it of the cars that are coming southbound to see if they're going, they're actually going faster, and they came out to be 33 miles per hour, which is pretty consistent with the other locations that they had done their observations at.
What method was used?
I believe that they used the floating car method.
Of course.
So, do we know if?
Is that the same method that was used?
The board's going to ask questions, and then we'll open it up to the?
I'm waiting.
People out here.
I'm waiting. Do we know, excuse me, do we know if the speed was, say, 35, or 36, or 37, would that make a difference in the sight, sight line?
Yeah, I mean, well, first of all, the data was not provided in, in their letter, so we're just taking it based on the text part. You know, there were no attachments of the actual speed observations. So, they are able to achieve, looking to the north, 250 feet. So, in relation to what does 250 feet mean with respect to ASHTO minimum guidelines, that's 35 miles per hour. So, even though the cars, they observe going 33, the sightlines that they're showing can achieve up to 35 miles per hour. Now, if I, I can remind you that at the last meeting, there was the discussion and documentation provided by the applicant regarding some kind of traffic calming measures. They were going to do some advanced warning signs for, you know, the speed reduction ahead, and also the driver's speed feedback signs. So, that's where you have the posted speed limit at 25 miles per hour. Then they also have a, an electronic sign that registers how fast people are going. So, it's a radar that shoots out at the car, the approaching car, red, bounces back to the device, registers it into the system, and then is able to produce the speed that that vehicle is driving at. That seems to be really a good common practice within the last five, 10 years, different types that you can do. You can do solar power, you can tie them into the utilities, you know, but the solar power is really contingent upon the vegetation that's around it because you need to make sure that those solar panels are able to get direct sunlight. So, I think those are great measures to be able to put in.
We have at least one of those here.
You know, so it's, it's a matter of can, you know, what speeds can they achieve? They're showing that they can achieve up to 35 miles per hour, but in that area, it's actually posted at 25.
Right.
So, I just wanted to kind of give that as a comparison.
And then the, the sightlines for the stopping sight distance, that was an open issue from last time, and you're comfortable with their?
I am, because on the plan that they showed last time with the intersection sight distance, there was, the topography of the land to the north kind of jutted up, and I believe that was from the retaining wall. And we just wanted to make sure that the stopping sight distance, because they're, they're measured at different heights, the intersection sight distance is a driver's eye height of three and a half feet to a driver's eye height of three and a half feet. The stopping sight distance is a driver's eye height of three and a half feet to an object height of two feet, which is the taillight of a car. Not of a truck, but of a car, so. So, that's why there was the question, but because they're measured to two different points, where you have the intersection sight distance is measured 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the roadway, and that's where the car is looking out to the oncoming vehicles versus the stopping sight distance, which is a car on the roadway looking at any object on the roadway in front of them. So, they were able to look to the curb. They don't have to look 14 and a half feet back from the edge of the pavement where the other driver's eye height is. You just need to be able to see any part of that car. And so, that's why, and that, that's all based on the ASHTO standards. So, that's why that it's measured to a different point at the driveway, and they don't have to cross over that retaining wall.
Right. I have a question, I'm not sure who to pose it to, because I made a point of standing about 10 feet back in the driveway, 25 Rockwood, the current driveway. Where is the new driveway as it relates to the current driveway?
I can let the project team?
Could you answer that? I'm just curious. Is it 10 feet to the left, 10 feet to the right? As, I just stood in the middle of 25 Rockwood yesterday about 10 feet back, and I was just curious with the driveway, because I know it's not in the same place.
Could you call it up there, Amy?
The new driveway would be closer to the southern edge of the property.
South edge, right.
Okay.
I think it's 10 feet off the?
Better 12 feet off of the property line, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
So, it's, so it's in effect, as you're exiting, it's to the right or to the south?
To the right of the current driveway.
Okay, then, because my, my concern from the last meeting was the sight distance to the north, but if the driveway is moved?
Further south.
Further south, then obviously that, that opens up a lot more than?
Well, we have an issue to the south, though.
Okay.
Have you had any dialogue with the butter to the south?
Not yet, and I can address that in a little more detail. Before I do, I wanted to just point out and thank the board, that the board's working through what for a lot of zoning boards in Massachusetts is August vacation. So, thank you for meeting with us in August to keep this moving forward and keep the project as, on an expeditious timeline. Again, I'm Christopher Agostino, counsel for the Village at Norfolk, LLC, and I wanted to also thank the board's engineer for continuing to really drill down on these specific issues since we? since we have at this point highlighted the safety of Rockwood Road as one of the few remaining engineering concerns that we're trying to overcome in order to get to the point where we can talk about a permit. And then in that analysis, we're now hearing that the intersection sight distance triangle looking to the south really appears to be the one open issue. At the last hearing, we discussed to some extent the difference between stopping sight distance and intersection sight distance, and it was referenced a few times that this idea of intersection sight distance is sometimes considered more of a matter of convenience than a matter of safety. And on other projects, I've actually seen boards impose a condition where upon completion of the project, that issue is more confirmed in the field rather than this idea that it's critical that we obtain a sight easement for intersection stopping sight distance, because as a practical matter, what happens and what we all do is, as you approach an intersection, you slow down, you stop, and then you edge out. So fourteen feet from the edge of pavement is, and we were ten feet from the edge of pavement the other day, is actually quite far back from the edge of pavement, which is why this intersection sight distance issue is more of an issue of convenience. So I thank the board's engineer for continuing to really review every single one of these issues, drill down on it, and now narrow it to this issue of what is more a matter of convenience than a matter of critical safety. As I indicated, I think confirming that, the comfort of that southbound sight, that southbound intersection sight distance line in the field is something that could be done as a condition of the permit at a later date. But I don't think a condition requiring an easement for what is a small area that, you know, as a practical matter, can't really have anything of substance there with regard to a matter of convenience is enough to, to hold up this particular permit. So that's how I've seen it approached in the past. You know, obviously, if the board's engineer wants to drill down on that a little further, he can, but, you know, I just, I don't see this as something that would rise to the level of imperiling health and safety with respect to this project under chapter forty-B.
Dan, what's your experience? Does it come into convenience or safety?
I think we've talked, we've debated this, I think, at several meetings, and I, you know, I, I still have, I still have trouble calling this a, a convenience issue, only because I, you know, if you're, if you're sitting in the driveway fourteen feet back and you don't have, let's say, let's say something's obstructing your view of the cars coming southbound from the north, and you don't, you can't see cars because there's a tree or something, or a pole, and you then therefore, you know, enter the, enter the street, you enter Rockwood Road, and if you don't see a car that's barreling down Rockwood going southbound, that car's going to slam into you. So I, I don't see how that's a convenience myself.
That's not this particular issue. This is looking southbound. So you were just talking about a car barreling from the north. So we have both from the north. Yes, and actually, to your point-
I'm talking in general.
Right, to your point, I, I think it is fact-specific, and that's why on other projects, I've seen this issue of intersection sight distance confirmed in the field after construction, to confirm this issue in the field. You're also talking about southbound is Norfolk Center. So slower traffic, cars are even slower approaching the intersection, which we've confirmed with additional data, that type of thing, totality of the circumstances regarding this corner, which is approximately thirty-one square feet, to rise to the level of requiring a permanent easement in an intersection sight distance concept, context, I just, I, I'm not the traffic engineer, but I, I haven't seen that as a practical application for a project of this type.
Let's, let me, let me address that, but let me just first understand, make sure I'm right, that if there's a deficiency on the, on the south side, that means cars coming up from town center going past, past the driveway going north, right? So if there's a deficiency, the same, the same concern would apply, that if you're in the driveway and you're, you're about to take a left, right, to go north, you're going to take a left to go north, and if you can't see a car barreling up the street, you might end up in that intersection and have a car hit you because you couldn't see that car, and that car was getting close to the intersection. I mean, that, that is the risk, if I'm not, am I correct, am I characterizing that risk correctly, Jason?
Yes, but let me, let me kind of throw one other thing in here, is that the ASHTO sight distances are based on the criteria of the fourteen and a half feet back from the other pavement. There's also an acceptance of being able to measure ten feet back, right, as the attorney has said, you know, inching closer to the road. Okay, so you're not actually in the roadway. You're not in the way of a car traveling on Rockwood Road. Now, based on the information that has been provided to us, those measurements have not been provided, so I don't know if the ten feet would be okay. But usually, for the intersection sight distance, it's not limited as close to the driveway. It's usually further away because there's a bend in the road or something further down. So, so right here, I mean, their engineer has already identified that it's two and a half feet back from the edge of the road. I mean, they've, they've specified it within their letter, the area that it does cross over, and, and doesn't provide any information to suggest that that's not the case. So they're supporting the case that it does cross into the abutting property. Now, if they measured it ten feet back, they might be fine, and that is an accepted traffic engineering measurement.
Well, maybe in, in two seconds, we're going to hear from their, their engineer, and, and Bill Scully will give us, give us that answer, but I, I just want to make sure, I'm characterizing the risk correctly so the board understands-
Yes.
-that is the risk to weigh. Now, let's go back to what Chris just said. I mean, you have to balance this risk of public safety with everything else about this project. And we all know, there's plenty of intersections with driveways that don't comply with these standards. They're all over the place. And so that's something the board is going to make a judgment on, and the board needs to make the judgment based upon the testimony from your consulting engineer, from the applicant, and from other advice you're going to get from other folks. But I, I'm not, I don't think, I guess to answer your question directly, I don't think this specific deficiency has to be a bar to the project. I don't think it has to be a condition. I think you need to weigh how serious this is, and then make a decision ba, you know, based on how serious you think it is, and balance that against the, the pros of the project, and, and think about what kind of condition might be appropriate, which isn't overly burdensome on the applicant. But I think we should get that question answered by Bill, if you can, answer it, about how far back, you know, can, can you go up to ten feet, six feet? Is there a point where you do have sufficient ISD?
Thank you. Bill Scully with Green International. So, a couple of things I just wanted to say. One was the stopping sight distance, that's, that's the distance you're approaching a spot where you can see and then safely stop and avoid any type of collision. Coming from the south, we have three-hundred-and-thirty feet of stopping sight distance. That means someone driving past the little commercial stores and the, and you add the TE parking lot, you can, you'll see any activity at the site drive. Coming from the north, approaching, we had, we had two-hundred-and-eighty feet. So, and I think at one of the last comment letters or meetings, it was requested to do the stopping sight diagrams, and we've prepared them, and, and that's the critical safety aspect, because someone driving on the street, if that person left the drive, left the site drive, that person driving has the ability to see that person from well more than the minimum distance and be able to stop and avoid. The, the sight line triangles that were prepared, we were asked to prepare, I, I believe, at the, the maximum or the speed, the eighty-five percentile that we've measured, and at the fourteen and a half feet back. So that's what we've prepared. And we just clip, just in this little area, we clip the corner, something like thirty square feet or something like that. And we haven't, we haven't done the diagram at ten feet. I would, I would guess if we measured from twelve feet back, we would avoid that property. And, and what I was probably prepared to say tonight was, one, reiterate what Chris said, because a lot of times you build a driveway, you have the clearing, you have the drive-in position, and then you can go out and verify everything and see, hey, do we have to take down a tree? Do we have to do something? In this case, do we need really that corner? But the other thing would be, because I don't feel fourteen and a half feet, ASHTO does have that in the guidelines. A lot of times, in that criteria, sometimes they're looking at roadways that are built, and there's no real traffic control. So you want to maximize the distance someone coming down a minor street can see along the major street. No one, I, I will, I would bet one hundred percent will stop at fourteen and a half feet back and then enter the drive, enter the street. It just does not happen. You know, the, your typical stop bar is, you know, four feet off the edge of, of the edge line, or right behind the sidewalk. So you're going to, you are going to be up further when you see it. So as I said, I think if you were twelve feet back, you wouldn't be clipping the property. Ten feet back, you would definitely not be clipping the property, and you would probably have three-hundred feet of, of distance. So, I mean, we can provide that diagram, but the other thing would be is, you know, we just make sure within the public layout that we have the sight line maintained, all the vegetation cleared, and, and I don't think that thirty-one square feet is going to be any particular problem. The, the other thing I just wanted to clarify, so we talk about convenience and safety and all that, so the stopping sight distance is your safety criteria. That's the minimum, and ASHTO recognizes it, Mastod, ITE. So when we use the word convenience, we, we do use it, and, and really, it's, it's so that someone driving on the major street doesn't have to slow down more than ten miles per hour because someone is entering the street from another driveway. So, so it's an operating condition, whether we call it convenience or change in speed. But again, we're, we're in the village where you want the speeds to be low, you expect them to be low. And so, so I just wanted to just clarify that a little bit. The other thing I wanted to let you know on the speeds, I, I think we're really, we're fine on the speeds. We've collected a lot of speed data out here, probably more than any place we've done residential developments of, you know, thirty houses or less. And I, I did meet with the chief, I went over the information. He's, I, I believe, I, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I believe he's comfortable with what my findings are on the speed issues and the slowing down coming into the village, the, the speeds coming northbound from the village. More importantly, you know, from our original report, and much of the presentation so far in the, in the last three or four letters do not contradict anything that we said in the original report. And in the original report, we talked about the twenty-five mile per hour speed zone sign that, that is on the street today. You don't see it until you come around the corner, and right there, it's probably buried in, in vegetation, it's hard to see. We recommended at that time, we moved that before the curve. We have talked about the speed display feedback sign, I talked to the chief about that, he likes that idea. So there's things that we want to do to, regardless of this project, you would like to encourage slower speeds as you're entering the center of town. Speed feedback signs, the other signs, you know, entering a reduced speed zone ahead, intersection ahead signs, pedestrian crosswalk signs are all part of our traffic plan, which is in the, the most recent letter to the board. It basically graphically shows what we've been talking about all these months. And, and that, that type of a action has been shown to reduce travel speeds by a minimum two to three miles per hour, and in many cases, seven to ten miles an hour. You probably won't get as big a reduction in this case because people are, are driving reasonably slow. It's a thirty-five mile per hour speed zone to the north. So they're coming towards the center at thirty-five miles per hour, or a little bit more than thirty-five miles an hour. And then they turn the corner, see the signs, see the railroad tracks, see the, the activity, and then they start to slow down. So the goal is, let's slow them down before they get to the twenty-five mile per hour zone, start that slowdown. All of our data has shown, it's, the data is showing how people are slowing down north to south. So, so we've, we've, I think, confirmed our information with the chief. We've done a lot of planned work on sight distances in response to Jason's requests. We detailed the traffic plan, and, and the applicant's committed to putting it in, and in terms of location, we would do that, subject to making sure DPW and the chief are happy with the location. And, and I think Jason mentioned solar power. Yes, you, you do locate it, but there's spots to locate it. It doesn't need sun twenty-four, seven. So with that, I think we've, we've more than adequately addressed the safety and sight distance issue. The Saturday issue, we provided the board additional information. I mean, Saturday is just not traditionally looked at in this state on Saturday conditions for residential development. In this particular location, I'll say anecdotally, but just living down here and commuter rail right there, the weekday is, is going to be greater than the Saturday. The Saturday generation of the, of the site could be comparable to Saturday peak hour. I mean, if you have twenty vehicle trips in the weekday peak hour, you might have twenty, twenty vehicle trips going in and out on the Saturday. But, but the volume on Rockwood, it's certainly not going to be greater. If it's comparable, it's comparable. You, you've got enough information to understand the impact of the project, understand its access needs, understand what type of mitigation that we're talking about. So we've provided, I think, a lot of information that addresses that, and, and I, I think that's it. I'll turn it over to whoever wants to talk.
Mike, just have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The proposed sidewalk, how does that factor into all of this analysis?
Well, in terms of, in terms of, the sidewalk, the sidewalk to me says it helps us, first of all, it gives a direct connection on that side of the street.
So does this analysis presume that a sidewalk will be installed? Is that, is that what that means?
What? The-
The sight, the sight distances.
No.
Are you-
Well, well, the sidewalk is, the sidewalk's in the public layout. So, so the one thing that the sidewalk does in my mind, besides giving a good pedestrian treatment up to the center and up to the train station, is that there's certainly not going to be a tree growing in the middle of the sidewalk. So, so for an area, it does help maintain here line of sight from the center down to the site drive.
And this analysis reflects that?
Well, the analysis reflects it regardless of the sidewalk. It's, you know, what we're saying is, here's our sight line. On a stopping sight distance, the sidewalk doesn't make any difference, because the motor that's on the street is, his sight line is looking at the edge of the driveway. So whether there's a sidewalk there or not, in this case, you know, it's a fairly straight area where they're looking. But the sidewalk, and sidewalk has a number of benefits, and so we, we are, it's part of our proposed plan, and committed if the town wants us to, to do that.
Mike, if I may, I think to move this along, if we could just get a sketch showing the, the intersection sight distance with the exception, instead of being the fourteen and a half feet back.
With the ten feet back?
Yeah, just, just so we can have documentation of that.
Good suggestion.
And if we could also just get that traffic data that you performed the other day.
So that was just, I, I can provide the information. It was a spot, just spot sample, twenty, about twenty minutes in the middle of the morning with radar gun. So I, we can get that information.
Are you going to talk, Chris?
No, I think Bill covered everything. Thanks, Bill.
All right, let's just, I don't see any other questions on this topic, or are there any more topic questions on this topic?
Just the request for the Saturday traffic counts, I know what they just said, but was it someone in the public who asked for that to be done, or was it somebody on our board who asked that to be?
That was me. I, I requested that.
Okay. Okay. So then, but you want us to tell you whether or not we need that now?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because there's no available traffic information-
Right.
Anywhere.
Well, I was just wondering if that'd come up because of some discussion with the, with the public, because, you know, like you say, normally we don't worry about the traffic count being higher on- count being higher on Saturday.
What's your experience with other ZPAs and work you've done at 40Bs?
Let me just interrupt one second.
Sure.
The, the site-generated traffic, so the cars going in and out of the driveway, that's gonna be lower on the Saturday than during the weekday, during the morning or during the afternoon. It was just a matter of that there's no data available from the state, from the Regional Planning Commission, or from the town for this area.
Well, I'm just saying that the queuing that goes on during the weekday with all the train traffic, I mean, I, I think we see a lot more cars on weekday in that area.
That's why I had made that recommendation, because I thought it might be beneficial to know that.
Okay.
Not because that it's going to change anything with their development, but just to find out what was going on on a Saturday. Because every, every roadway in every town is different. Traffic volumes fluctuate throughout the course of the day, the day of the week, and the month of the year. So it, it fluctuates. So there's, we, there's no data available in this area for a Saturday. So we're just guessing and saying, yeah, it kind of feels that way. So I, I understand the state guidelines suggest that on a, you know, for residential developments, look at the morning and the afternoon for weekday, but on a Saturday, it depends on the area, and we just don't know, because there's no data available for this area.
All right, thank you.
Jason, at the beginning, you mentioned, or you were somewhat adamant about a visibility easement.
Yes.
Based on what we've heard now, where do you stand with that? Because in the beginning, it sounded like you wanted one. We've gone back and forth a little bit on whether when it's necessary or not, and obviously the ultimate decision of the board. Where do you, and where do you stand now with that, based on the information?
So here's the thing, is that based on the information that they have provided us, they need a sightline easement.
Okay.
If they come back with additional information that shows that their sightlines do not cross over the abutting property, measure 10 feet back from the edge of the roadway, then you might not need it. But right now, based on the information that's been submitted to the town, they need one.
Okay.
And, and so the, the information that Devin requested will give us that answer, correct?
Correct. That's right.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from folks out here on this particular topic? Yes, sir.
Chris Henry, 30 Boardman Street. So I guess my question is, if we used the rubber stoppers in the road for all the other traffic studies, why was that method not used when we asked for this additional one? If in fact, the sightline data is, like he said, that, oh, if we just move forward 10 feet, everything's fine, we knew the meeting was tonight, why didn't you bring a sketch that showed that?
Okay, so I, I hear two questions. The first one, again, we're going back to this issue of BETA's analysis versus the applicant's engineer's analysis and conclusion that traffic speeds slow as you approach Norfolk Town Center.
No, I'm asking the specific methodology of the results. In other words, when you did the test the first time, it was done with those rubber lines?
Well, hold on, so we were asked to collect additional data to confirm our analysis or find out whether there was something that we were not expecting at that particular location, just to put the board's mind at ease, understanding that the collection that was done was done to determine the overall operating speeds in the vicinity of the site. There's no requirement or indication that a specific location has to be measured, all right? There's just no standard. So we had the initial data, we were asked to go back out to do a specific location. We did that with a radar gun to, to spot check that specific location, which again was not required, but we agreed to get additional information in order to confirm that conclusion. That's where we are on that. The second question about the sightline easement, 14 and a half feet is, as was mentioned, the absolute worst-case scenario in terms of making sure that you can see around a corner, to get as far back as possible. As was indicated, ASHTO or, or some standard allows you to go up to 10 feet from the intersection, which would push that line outside of the private property. So the 14 and a half foot line that we showed...
Chris, my only point is that you didn't, I hear him saying that, but I'm just saying that you didn't bring the data that shows that, correct?
That shows 10 feet?
Correct.
We showed the worst-case scenario, because again...
And you, and you don't meet that worst-case scenario?
Well, again, I, I don't agree with the board's engineer's conclusion that a sight easement would be required at 14 and a half feet. He's saying it's required, I have not seen that required for intersection sight distance as a practical application.
I guess my answer is, well, all the more reason to bring that data that says that at the 10 feet, we make it.
Well, I, I think it's, I actually think it's apparent from the, from the picture. I mean, if you throw a scale on there, you can discern that, and I, I think that's where we're gonna, but we're gonna show the triangle to show that that intersection sight distance is there without a sight easement. Again, it's, it's not like...
I'm just disappointed, because this is, again, another meeting where we've asked for this information, and here we are, and we don't quite have it.
No, 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 please don't, please don't characterize it as that. Please, because the more information we provide, the more questions it seems to raise, and that's not the, that's not where we're going with this. So we showed a plan last time that showed a rock wall that was within a different sightline, and that raised another question, and there were all these allegations that, well, you didn't show us this, and what if that? Okay? We're answering one question at a time, we're crossing each one off the list. In showing that plan, we showed the worst-case scenario because we wanted to exhibit what the worst-case scenario is, understanding from our perspective that even at that worst-case scenario, it's not a showstopper.
It just would have been helpful for, for the people that are laypeople, that aren't necessarily traffic engineers, to be able to see conclusively, somebody put it in writing, hey, here's where we do meet the requirement. We don't make it at 14, but here's where we do, as opposed to, well, I'm pretty sure we make it there. That, that, that's my only request, is that, that's what I was hoping for, some finality.
Okay. We're gonna work on that for the next session?
Yes, thank you.
We requested that information, and we're gonna get that for the next session. Yes, sir. Tim?
Tim Gillette, 27 Rockwood Road. 19, 25, 27, and 29 are already blind turns out of their driveway in each direction. Fisher and I have talked in the past. I have offered to fix this sightline and put this to bed using the front of my property, take down the stone wall, slide back the wall, put a foundation under the house, and you're done. Slide this new driveway up the street to get it farther away from the train tracks, and you still have your long sightline down the street. And you don't have as much worry about someone pulling out of the driveway to the left and getting hit when someone stops to let them go.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to respond?
If you choose to, sure.
I think the beginning of that statement was important, because you identified several houses on that stretch.
Yeah, they're all blind driveways.
Correct.
And now you're gonna put 250 cars coming towards us in both directions.
That are dealing with an existing condition...
That's right.
That we have offered to install...
I'm not.
We have offered to install traffic calming measures to slow, again, the goal being to slow the speed for everybody on that road, which would help...
The goal of slowing the people down isn't gonna help you.
And that's, that's the extent of the answer I have on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna, Chris...
Make sure you have a parking spot for an ambulance out front.
We requested the study, and we'll move forward with that, the, with Devin's mission. Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just...
Yes, sir.
If we can get the information as far ahead of the next meeting as possible, so that we can provide our response to the board in time for you to be able to see it, so that we're not, hopefully not rehashing the same discussion at the meeting.
Okay, yeah, good point.
Can I add to that comment? For this meeting today, we received, at least I did, all this information on this past Monday. For me, with going to work and everything, it's almost impossible for me to review this information in a timely fashion. And when we come back at the next meeting and we have more questions on that, that's, this is the exact reason why that might happen. When we have two days in advance.
Traffic information?
With everything, with, with the, the new drainage report and all the information we were given in, for this meeting today, when we receive it on Monday, it makes it really hard for this, I don't want to speak for everyone on the board, but for me, it's really hard to review the material.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I also think that it's a, a good, reasonable thing to request the, the sightline easement, I guess, and the, the point was raised that, well, why don't we push that until the end, when we can do a site visit, and then do it? I know at least if I were the abutter, and that sightline easement was my negotiation, I think I would prefer to have that negotiation take place before, as opposed to after everything is complete. I think from a, you know, purely leveraged negotiation point, it's a stronger argument, whoever that person is, beforehand rather than after the fact.
I, I think it's fine the way it is. I, I think you're gonna get the, the supplemental information in time for next hearing, and...
Okay, yeah.
To determine if it's even needed.
Yeah, I think we're, Chris, I think we're gonna get the supplemental information we're all looking for by the next meeting. We'll answer a lot of these questions. Okay, thank you. All right. Have we exhausted traffic? All right, good. The next item we want to cover is, is Glenn here tonight?
No, Glenn wasn't able to make it tonight.
Okay. Who's gonna represent his recommendations?
I, I can speak to him.
Okay.
Again, excuse me, at the last meeting, the board asked that, that our architect, as well as the applicant, get information so that our architect, Glenn Fontecchio, had a chance to, to review it in terms of, of architecture, which they did. I, I think there may still be a little bit of information that he was looking for, but he did provide a, a letter to the board dated August 9th with some of his recommendations. And I, I think basically, there's, there's three, three comments. I think a lot of them point to the, the same subject of, of trying to make the street face of the buildings as attractive as possible. And Chris, I think you brought it up at the, the previous hearing about the garage doors, having two doors instead of a one large door, trying to make the front doors a little more accessible, whether they have some kind of a porch or some kind of a roof covering to make them appear to be a little bit more presented as a, as the, the front door of the building. I, I, I think the other comment was, a unit number 15, that really doesn't face either the street or, or the green, and sort of how, how is that presented for people arriving at the development, whether it's the, the owner or a guest, and maybe looking at relocating that, that unit or repositioning it so that it, it has a, a face either on the, the center green or, or on the street.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead, Bill.
I, I think, you know, again, I'm not sure if this information was shared or not. I think Glenn was also looking for some renderings, to that kind of give an idea as you enter into the development, as well as, I think as you get through sort of the ring road, just a rendering of what some of those units look like, to get a perspective on that.
Before you respond, I, I'd like to say that these comments, I, I like what he has recommended here. I think they make a lot of sense. I think they enhance the value of your, of your property and your project. I don't see anything here that's unreasonable, so I'd like to make comments from the board.
Yeah, Glenn did comment on the beginning of his letter, he was talking about the units being close together, or at least he didn't have the dimensions to assess that. It's at the very top of his letter, before the comments, is concerned about the units in the green area being close. But again, again, he didn't have the dimensions necessarily to make, to fully justify the comment.
Has he received the information with regard to the units?
I think he did.
That you know of?
We added it to the most recent utility plans.
Has he seen that?
Glenn would probably not have.
Because I would ask Glenn if he's satisfied now.
Did Glenn have something to report, you think?
He may not have, and he's been away, but I'll make sure, he's due back next week, I believe, I'll make sure he gets that information to look at, just so that we can get an answer to Joe's question.
Do you have it already, though?
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like a fourth comment amongst his letter.
Did you want to respond to any of this, Fisher?
The, the issue with the garage doors is, although having two garage doors are definitely more attractive, the problem now is, what fits?
On 16 feet, you're gonna need 20 feet, which would make the garage look a little overwhelming. I think what might be attractive is, is to put more character on the door itself. Some, I, I'm happy to talk to Glenn about that, is, is to do like some windows on top and some, some features on the door itself to break up the, 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 the long door look. As far as the windows on, on, again, the, the, the long wall, I, I agree with him, and I think, I think that would be very attractive. Actually, generally, all his comments are very, very attractive, very to the point, and, and we will, we will address them all.
But if I might suggest, Mr. Chairman, I'd say I think Glenn will be back from vacation next week, if it's okay with, with the board, that the applicant and Glenn talk directly.
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
About some of these things and come up with some ideas.
So we're not talking about this again next week? If we can get this, these resolved before next week, next, excuse me, not next week, next, next meeting?
Yeah.
In particular, the, the conversation about single garage doors versus the double door. Didn't you do the, the two-door setup at 106108? Haven't you done it there? What's the difference there?
We have both.
Because they look very good there.
We have one door and two doors over, on, on Main Street, on Boyd's Crossing. And I think, I think they look attractive. I mean, and, but I appreciate those comments, anything that would improve the look is, is of value to us, so I'll, I'll deal with him and we'll work it out.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question on, on the, what's been submitted? So I, the way we left it in the last hearing was that Glenn was supposed to give them a list of, of design plans that he wanted. I don't think we ever saw that list, maybe it was just...
We got that list and we responded to it.
Was that something they submitted to us?
Return to the board, no. I don't think we saw it, no.
Do you have it handy, or?
This would have been from Glenn, two out back. A list of requirements, drawings, renderings, elevations.
So I guess, while you're looking for that, I guess what I was getting at is, what, what was submitted, I think, was just floor plans and elevations. Did we not ask for site sections or street perspectives? I, I thought that we talked about asking for that, so we, especially where all the buildings are really close together and it's... Do you know if that was provided, or?
My recollection was that we were going to provide the building plans that we had, and Glenn was then gonna get back to us with additional information. That didn't come until Friday, and I, I don't know that there was actually a request for a street scrape, streetscape rendering, was it?
I don't know if it was in, I don't know if it was in that list, but I know it was discussed at the, the meeting in July.
Yeah, I, I have a note on it specifically.
So my recollection was, we were going to give them what we had.
Okay.
We gave them all those building plans, and then he was gonna let us know what additional info he wanted, and I'm not aware that he said he was looking for it.
He did. I understand. ECS for, um, let's see, do not have a completely current site plan based on unit plan, courses do not seem consistent. Please also ask that space between units be dimensioned. Additionally, I do not have side in-ear elevations of the type A2 triplex units. Please have applicant provide this material. So we did get...
So we provided the site plan and the...
You provided the site plan and the...
The triplex.
PA2 triplex.
Right.
So I sent him the triplex. I would have sent utility plans, just to you, I wouldn't have, I would have sent those to Ryan.
Yeah, and I, I made, getting the utility plans, well, I think we got them... Yeah, and I made, getting the utility plans, well, I think we got them this week, but I'm not sure that I would have been looking at the utility plans to see the dimensions between the units. But I think if you can talk to Glenn, and I think we can get it squared away, he may still ask, if he's not 100% sure, he may still ask for a perspective.
It's just customary, at least in the projects I've worked on, it's pretty customary for a project of particularly this density to have at least some street perspectives, just so we see how, because everything's going to be very close together, and to see how that's going to feel in the context of the neighborhood. I think we also said cross-sections, I'm not really sure what that means, but...
Yeah, I think it was a cross-section sort of through the entire site to get an idea of the relative difference in elevation between the units.
So a site section, basically.
Yeah. And again, I would say that the perspective, I agree with, and I think that was discussed, the site section would only be if, based on the information that Glenn has now, if he's not comfortable that he can understand the varying elevations.
I think the concern on the site sections is probably mostly with the neighbors that are closest to Rockwood, where they are going to be using some retaining walls. We have low areas and...
The front.
Yeah, the front of the site. I don't think we need it all, the whole site. I think that we talked about this in the last hearing.
Right. My recollection was that the wholesale redesign that we had done in order to move the buildings away from the front of the site resolved those types of concerns about the appearance at the front of the site generally. We had some discussion about the fence, but I didn't know that the board was asking us to hire somebody to do a depiction of that following the wholesale redesign that we did. I thought the redesign sort of resolved those concerns, and that was the intent of the redesign.
Bill, when are you going to be talking to Glenn?
I believe he's back from vacation the beginning of next week, so...
All right. Can you jump on getting together with him, making sure that Fisher and his team know exactly what he's looking for?
Yep.
And get it so we can jump on this and get this all resolved as quickly as possible?
Well, I think you guys should decide if you want the street perspectives or not. I think that's really a judgment call on your part. Is that something you care about?
Dan, actually, we did, Tom Ryan's outfit did do a streetscape at the entrance to depict that. So to your point, we did, we did do some visualization of what that entrance area would look like.
Yeah, I think I'm talking about more internally. I mean, it's...
Can we, yeah, I think if Bill can put together, A, a memo to Glenn, what he's requesting, and then make sure it's formalized so that the board sees it, Fisher's team sees it, and then his responses prior, are given prior to seven days before the next hearing, so we all have that information. But I think it's got to be formalized. It just can't be a conversation between you, Glenn, and then Glenn and Fisher. I think they got to formalize it so everybody knows what they're asking each other for, and then we get the information. Because we asked for all this information last meeting. And we don't, and it wasn't, obviously, Fisher's team is not completely aware of what's requested, and I think we need to formalize that.
When will Glenn be back?
I believe he's back at the beginning of next week. So I'll talk to him as soon as he's back and get that list together.
And Amy, would you make sure the board gets, and Dan gets a copy of all those memos?
Yeah.
So there should be at least three memos coming back and forth, plus drawings.
I would also just announce, so that everyone's aware, in the interim since the last hearing, Fisher signed an extension to the 180-day deadline to close the hearing. You know, since we did have some back and forth on issues of traffic, and we're now, you know, collaborating on additional issues, it's, if there's any feeling that the board didn't get information in a timely manner, I think just to point that out, that we took steps to give additional time to try to, you know, give the board some flexibility to review this stuff, if they're feeling as though, you know, they're under pressure to get this stuff done. So that was signed at the last hearing, or since the last hearing.
Since the last hearing. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Any comments on architectural from folks that are here tonight? Okay, let's move on. I think our next topic of discussion is the mounding analysis for the septic and stormwater filtration. Bill, are you going to address that issue?
Yeah, we did, to the extent that I can right now. We did receive a groundwater mounding analysis that the applicant provided. We have not had a chance yet to look at it in depth. We just got it the other day, so. I did take a quick look at it and some of the conclusions, and a quick review of the methodology. So the methodology seems appropriate. They analyzed the septic system leach fields, and the conclusion was that the mound was not going to come appreciably close to the bottom of the leach fields. One thing that they didn't do was do a mounding analysis of the stormwater infiltration systems, which I think they should do. So the board has a comfort level of what that analysis shows.
All right, so you need some more time to analyze what they've done, and do you, and you need an analysis of stormwater as well?
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, with respect, so Title V requires a mounding analysis with respect to the septic systems. So that's a state requirement. I believe that the stormwater infiltration basins and the mounding analysis with respect to that is a local requirement, and I believe we had asked for a waiver of that requirement for this specific site layout, because we're doing the single-family homes.
Isn't that within this Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook? If the groundwater is within four feet of the stormwater system, then a mounding analysis needs to be performed.
Well, there's the local requirement, but this project is not, there are no wetlands, there's no jurisdictional wetlands on site, so the stormwater management now regulations of the DEP wouldn't necessarily apply to this site. So if there's a local concern that would want to look to that issue, then, you know, if there's, for instance, a, an off-site septic system that's proximate to a potential mound, then that would be a local concern to identify.
Should we do that, Chris, and do that?
But where that issue is covered under a local bylaw, you know, one of the things we spoke about early is we're proposing this single-family product. And where this single-family product is spread out over the site, and we're not infiltrating or we're not sending any stormwater off-site, we're infiltrating everything on-site. We only have so much space to put these things. So, you know, what we had done was we moved some houses around to free up open space as well, and all of that redesign was intended to resolve some of the concerns about density and just, you know, a lot of water being concentrated in certain areas. But where it's not subject to the state stormwater management regulations, I think what we're asking for is a waiver on this issue to allow this design to go forward. The alternative would be, if there is an area where it's of concern, near an off-site septic system or something, then we want to explore that. But as far as the functionality, you know, I think Jim's team, you know, is going to have to have a comfort level with what we have at the end of the day, since, you know, we've addressed it with respect to Title V, which is required.
So if I could address that.
So I, Chris is stating the law correctly. They can ask for a waiver from the requirement to provide that kind of analysis. The board should be aware, though, that according to the leaching bed detail sheet, sheet seven on the plans that came in, actually, can you pull that up, Amy? And if you can blow up the chart in the bottom left-hand corner? Yeah. So the second to last column on the right, GW elevation is the groundwater elevation. And then if you look at the bottom chamber elevation, which is sort of in the middle, that's the separation that we're talking about, and there are several, there are several instances, I think, where the separation is around two or three feet. I mean, Jim can correct me if I'm wrong. So there is not a lot of margin for error if there is any kind of mounding effect from those stormwater systems. So that, the board should be aware that that is a potential concern, that there's a high water table with respect to those infiltration systems. And so that might justify having a mounding analysis done, at least for those specific areas where the ground table is high.
Again, the problem with what we're having with the water mounding analysis, which I know I've said this before, it was the very first thing I attempted to do.
When we, was, the first study done on the property is the water table on most of the property is so low, and having water table to do what's called a slug test, which is important for the water mounding analysis, was not there. Winter, summer, spring, we just couldn't find it, except for on the bottom of the property, at the entrance. So it was, it was really very difficult to do. And it's very limiting to say, no, we now we want to do that now at this stage of the game because of that. We just could, we have to make assumptions in order to assume how the water will behave, because we went down, I don't know the technical, how far down we went?
Below, over 20.
20 feet deep and no water. 20 feet deep and no water. So I think it is burdensome now to say, okay, wait a minute, we have to do this, even though other projects in town were not, this was not done on. Just to require it here, I think, is a little burdensome on us right now.
But I'm only referring to the ones that you did find water. I'm not talking about the, so the one, we're talking about four or five that assuming were in the front of the site?
Right. I can't, I'm not technically enough, smart enough to tell you what can and cannot be done. All I know is that my, the hydro geo engineer told me we just, we just could not run the slug test because of the well, the bottom of the wells were dry. But if you have a specific request, please let me know, we'll be glad to.
If I could add some additional information on that, one of the other things you asked us to look at was adding overflows in some locations, and that's what we attempted to do. So if you pan actually a little more to the right, it shows there that last column, emergency overflow elevations, so to a number of the chambers, we interconnected them. And if you want to look at the utility plan perhaps, what we attempted to do was, where it made sense, we interconnected the leaching beds. So as you know, the site is sloping down towards Rockwood Road, and I get to use my laser pointer. So the high point of the site is right around here, and these dashed lines represent the overflow pipes that we've added at some locations. There's overflows at this corner of the site. So we're interconnecting all of these chambers right here with an overflow pipe. So this set of chambers would be interconnected with these. And again, that would only be in the event of a 100-year storm. If the, if this leaching bed were to fill up in a 100-year storm, then it would overflow in, you know, as a series of cascading chambers down to the low point here, and then discharge over here. So that was one of the trade-offs we looked at incorporating.
Do you have any documentation showing that it's only for the 100-year storm and not the 210, 25?
We have the, yeah, the calculations are in the report.
Do we have those calculations?
Yes. It's a drainage report, not in the hydro geo report.
I have, there's some, that's right here.
Chris? Jim, you had mentioned, where you're showing it draining out at that corner over there? I guess my concern, I mentioned it last time, Bill, is the northern intersect. Do you know what I'm referring to? That crosses underneath Rockwood Road and then goes down Ware Drive. This is pre-existing, and there cannot be any water, any additional water added to that intercept. And I mentioned it last time, have you guys explored or checked that to make sure? Because that discharge is right in line with where that intercept is.
Are you referring to the town basin, or?
No, 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 the intercept that's right there.
Right there.
Crosses over Rockwood, goes down Ware Drive, and your discharge is in line with that intercept.
Yes. So we look, we looked at, when we conduct the drainage analysis, we first look at the site as it is today, under existing conditions, and we do our runoff calculations based on that for the different storms. We then do that same drainage analysis as it's built out and compare the two runoff rates and volumes, and in all cases, we have a reduction of flow to all off-site locations.
Where is that documentation?
It's...
In this report, it says all design points 100-year storm. Is there a second report in here that shows the 210 and 25-year storm events?
We have provided the 100-year storm calcs because we're recharging all runoff on-site.
Bill, the mounding...
But we don't have documents showing that.
Do we need this additional?
We didn't do the storms. We haven't provided those calcs now, but we could.
I thought you did. Sorry. And I also have just another question. On your stormwater systems, do typical stormwater systems provide freeboard within the infiltration systems?
There's different types of drainage systems, and for underground leaching chambers like this, there is some additional freeboard. You may be referring typically for an open detention basin, for instance.
By that, I mean, is there a concern that in the years of use of these infiltration systems, that sediment could bypass your, I'm not sure the exact system you used to remove the suspended solids? But if that, if some of those suspended solids were to get into your stormwater systems, would that reduce your capacity within those systems?
It could. I, generally, the design methodologies that we use, it's a very conservative approach, and we're looking at worst-case scenarios for a 100-year storm, which, I don't know the last time we got a 100-year storm. That might have been the hurricane of 55.
Maybe 100 years ago?
Not quite long ago, but... But do you have the calculations for the 100-year storm? I think that's what Devin asked.
Yes, yes.
You got those?
We have the 100-year storm. But I'm just, you know, concerned about the other storm events, whether or not you're increasing rate and volumes for those storm events. Because the 100-year storm event is an entirely separate and different storm event than the 225-year storms.
Right. And my point is we're basically storing all the runoff on-site, except at a couple of limited locations, so there is no off-site runoff to, the only point, we're discharging any runoff right at, right at this property corner.
So the point is, if you have a tank that holds a 100-year storm, does that tank bill hold a 200-year storm?
No, I understand the concept of if it does not discharge any water whatsoever during the 100-year storm event, and I would agree that there would be no discharge from those systems. But if it's showing discharge in the 100-year storm event, then I think it, it's not, there could be water coming from those systems in the storm events that are smaller than that.
We can provide that calculation for the 210-year storm, but it's going to be insignificant.
But I also just want to get back to what I was saying before, that some of these systems appear to be designed so that the stormwater elevation is above the actual the chambers themselves and go up into the stone. And it seems that if you're designing to be very close to the top of that stone, I'm just concerned if sediment were to get in there and reduce the capacity of those systems, then in 50 years' time, when maybe there is a 100-year storm event, that those systems would no longer have the capacity to withstand a 100-year storm event.
So there is potentially the need for future maintenance down the road, and, but as a matter of course, what we're, the methodology that we're using to size the chambers is... chambers is fairly typical.
But my point being is if there's no, I can find a particular system to look at, but if there's no extra capacity now, because you're within, let's just say, four hundredths of a foot from the top of that stormwater system, if sediment were to build up in those systems, maintenance or not, you know, if you can't clear it, you know, twenty-four hours before that hundred-year storm event, it seems to me that there might be the possibility that that system might not be able to handle the one-hundred-year storm event again.
It's a good point. I think we've discussed the operation of these over, these systems over time. And we have asked for an operations and maintenance plan, because I think it's important. You can't wait twenty years to start looking at these systems and start to maintain them, or try to beat a big storm. If you know a large storm is coming, try to get out there and clean them. You have to maintain them on a regular basis. So I think the O and M plan, which I think you've committed to providing, is important. The final details of these, these systems need to have some kind of inspection ports on them, so you can, you can see into them. And Jim can probably speak more about whether, whatever additional capacity is in the system in the hundred-year storm. But I think that these systems need to be maintained on a regular basis. If they're not, then your point is correct, that over time, they're going to lose capacity. And I think that's an important part of the, whatever conditions the board puts on here, and who's ever going to be the ultimate owner of the property, that that O and M plan has to be adhered to. And whether there's a mechanism to be able to document that is maybe something the board needs to consider.
So if I could just go back to the mounting question on the, on the drainage systems, is it my understanding we could have, or they could do a couple mounting analyses in spot locations where we're particularly concerned, perhaps, about the separation at the front of the site, maybe that big basin, two-eight-two, where everything's going to go into? If you're tying these all together, that one, I think it's two-eight-two, is going to be the one that's going to be handling most of those flows. Maybe do, and isn't that an equation? Isn't that a math issue? You don't have to go in the site and do any more work.
Yeah, so there are a couple of concerns. So just two things on that. One is, I think, and Jim, please correct me if I'm mistaken, but the consequence of what you're describing is that ultimately it would end up in the emergency overflow. So that's why we added the emergency overflow. Also, what Bishop described is that the data we have is not reliable for a mounting analysis. So whatever comes, because of the issue of the low water table, so we were unable to do that in every location.
I'm not talking about every location.
But what I'm getting at ultimately is, if there's some off-site consequence that's going to cause a health and safety issue, if there's a septic system that's adjacent to an area where we're concerned about mounting, then let's explore that septic system. If the concern is that we're going to overflow into an emergency outflow pipe that's therefore exactly what you're describing, then what's the need for the mounting analysis? If there is a mound there, and it forms, it reduces the capacity ultimately-
Yep.
-mount water, it ends up going in an emergency outlet.
Right.
That's not critical. We did it for, is that wrong?
I'll disagree with you. The emergency overflow is there for emergency overflow. It's not there because you know when you do the design that you may have a mounting issue, and you may reduce capacity in your system, and therefore it's going to go out the emergency overflow. The idea is that the system is designed for a hundred-year storm, to completely contain a hundred-year storm. If there's some anomaly in the future that affects that, the emergency overflow is there. If you get a storm that produces runoff larger than a hundred-year storm, the emergency overflow is there. I don't think you should be counting on the emergency overflow because your design doesn't have the capacity you think it does.
But I think, I was speaking more in terms of, and I gave the recitation of local concerns early. And that's what I was getting at, if there is a local concern, because there's no local bylaw on this, you know, Dan can recite the standards. If there's some local concern about a condition that would necessitate this, let's talk about that, but otherwise, we're asking for a waiver of that requirement.
Okay, so I just want to be clear. We're talking about six locations out of all your leaching chambers where there's a separation concern, where there might be between two or three feet of separation between the groundwater and the bottom of your basin, or your leaching chamber.
Five or six, Dan?
It's, yeah, come up, it's-
I think it's five.
Six. Maybe it's five. I'm just looking at this quickly. So whatever it is, the point is that, you know, would it make sense, I guess we should be deferring to our consultant, is it makes sense to have your hydrologist, who you've already hired to do the septic mounting, do the equation? If it's as simple as I'm saying, I don't know if it is, but if it's as simple as doing a math equation to look at the mounting effect for one or two of these leaching chambers, is it worth doing?
What's the answer, Bill? Is it a math equation? Well, the first answer is yes. I think it's worth doing on some of these systems where you're showing a groundwater elevation, you're showing a bottom elevation within three to four feet. I'll also say, I think all the information has already been developed, and I understand the issue with the slug test, but the report already talks about making assumptions based on percolation tests rather than the slug test. So I think all the information is there, and I would agree, I don't think every system needs to be looked at. But I think, and I'm not sure what the number is, because I can't read the chart that well, but I would say where you're showing a groundwater elevation, and the bottom of your system is within three to four feet of that elevation, I think it makes sense to do the mounting analysis. And again, I understand the issue about an off-site issue, but I also think it's a design issue, that if the system is not going to operate the way that you think it is, that, that's something separate from an off-site impact. Do you want to specifically identify the one or two or three that they're going to do? If I could do that tomorrow. Okay. I'd rather than try to do it tonight.
Can maybe, can you guys just clarify, where is the emergency outlet going on this? Jim? Because you are tying together a bunch of the chambers into one chamber at the end, two-eight-two. And then if that overflows, where does it go?
I believe this is two-eight-two, that you approved it.
Right.
So this series of chambers, it's coming down the hill-
Right.
-into that. And this actually overflows into this chamber.
Oh.
Go out.
Okay. So the overflow is on a private property?
It's-
Right?
Yeah, it's on our property, but it would discharge over.
Yeah. And so I guess that's another, I mean, if this was going into a wetland, I might feel differently. But the fact that it's going to go overland into a neighbor's property, I think that's another reason to just do this analysis.
And next, adjacent to this neighbor's property is where that northern intercept is, which goes down to Town Pond, which no more water can be added to that facility. So that's why it becomes important.
Also significantly lower, that creates a property.
Right. Yeah. Okay. So I think we close that issue.
Yeah.
Bill's going to-
Yep.
...provide a recommendation on that. Can I ask a question about the septic analysis? So there was a mounting analysis done for your septic systems. I just wanted to ask Bill, I know you haven't looked at it, but Amy, can you pull up sheet And then if you can zoom into that chart?
Great.
Yeah. All right. So the way I'm interpreting this, if you can scroll to the right, yeah, so the GW again is groundwater, that's the groundwater, assumed groundwater, high groundwater elevation. And this is the seasonal high groundwater, right?
I guess on bottles.
Yep. And then what we're looking for is separation of four to five feet with the column that says bottom, SAS bottom, is that right?
Yes.
So in several of these systems, the separation is right at four or five feet. There's really no margin for error. And that, you know, I know that's fairly common, but I guess I just want to make sure Bill, I guess the question to Bill is, I mean, I'm looking at the, you know, the in, into the system, out of the system, all, the whole system seems to be about a foot or two feet in depth. Is that common? I mean, I'm just a layperson, I don't, that just seems very strange to me, that your entire leaching bed is only, you know, two feet tall. Is that-
It's not uncommon.
Okay.
Particularly, if it's under a roadway, maybe it's different, but that's not uncommon.
So this design can work, having a very shallow?
Yeah.
I have another question. While we were talking about the overflows of the system, I looked at your hydro catalog, and it appears that some of your systems that have overflows aren't connected to corresponding ponds downstream. I think that definitely needs to get looked at, and just make sure that all your ponds are connected how they should be in the model. And just another question I had, I noticed subcatchment fourteen S and subcatchment five R are disconnected from the system. Just wondering what those two are. This unit eight roof and front roof of unit twenty-six.
I believe those, there were a couple of locations where we're providing roof drains. So those subcatchments are two roof drains.
Can you show the pond modeling in that?
Sure.
Oh, and there was, there was one more, seven A. That, that was just a subcatchment by itself as well.
So Bill, you're going to look at the mounting analysis and revised plans and?
Yeah, there was a, so there was the mounting analysis submitted, there was a revised drainage report submitted, as well as revised plans, so, yeah. We'll look at that over the course of the next week, and provide comments back to the board. And we'll coordinate with the applicant, excuse me, as well.
Just for completeness, I heard it mentioned a few times about off-site septic, if anything's identified as an issue off-site. Does that identification? If there's something about off-site issues that would be the reason why they'd have to do the analysis? Is our board a health compare, like anything going on with the septic?
There is no off-site, though, it's all contained off-site.
Okay, all right, so.
They're looking for a waiver.
I just heard the term mentioned a couple of times.
The reason I mentioned, as we're talking about the infiltration from these basins-
Right.
...raising the natural level of groundwater, because we're putting water in the soil, and it doesn't just sink right to the bottom, it sort of builds up and spreads out.
Mm-hmm.
And if it spreads out towards an area where there's a septic system-
Right.
-then that septic system may lose its separation groundwater.
Right. So who's determining that that's not happening?
Well, we, on this particular site, I don't think that's been identified as an issue. I was raising that as the type of thing that comes up in the context of groundwater mounting, and it's, it didn't, it wasn't apparent here.
But hearing that discussion is with me, ask this question.
Sure, no, absolutely.
I always wonder who determines if there is an issue like that. That's what I was trying to just get to the bottom of. It sounds like you're not, you don't, you're not producing that situation.
Right, I don't see that, but that's in, that's the type of context that groundwater mounting is really raised as a critical matter of local concern.
Yeah. I don't think, based on where we know the septic systems are-
Right.
-on adjacent properties, we're going to look at it.
Okay.
But the issue, as was mentioned, would be, the groundwater mound has an elevation to it, but it also has dimensions, horizontal dimensions to it. So if that groundwater mound were to build and go underneath an adjacent septic system, it might artificially raise the groundwater elevation under that existing septic system, which then could create a problem for that system.
But you'll be looking to see if that's the case here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Chris, did you have a question?
I do. I would just request that, I don't think the board should grant that waiver for a variety of reasons. I think that the property that is located to the south of the entrance of the property, that property sits significantly lower than the new elevations that are going to be created by this project. The storm overflow that they're containing on-site, the discharge is directly abutting that neighbor's property. There are also local concerns about the Kids Place, Norfolk Housing Authority, which directly abuts this on the back, has a private septic system that pumps and leaches through the property that directly abuts this. So I would like to see that groundwater mounting analysis done at the rear of the property as well. I realize the high point is the middle, so if they don't need that, them there, because the elevations everybody's comfortable with, fine. But I think to the, to the rear and to the front, those are important areas. Where those thresholds are so close, I think we need to know what the numbers are.
You're going to discuss that and figure out? Yeah, again, well, excuse me, we'll identify the systems where we think there's a reasonably close interface between the groundwater elevation and the bottom of the system. All right. Good, thank you. Okay. Okay, I think we've hashed this over sufficiently. The next item is, Bill, have you provided us with the waiver list?
We did.
The comments on the waiver list?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have that. Your comments on the waiver list. The, how do you want to handle that, Dan? Do you want to jump through that? Not tonight.
Yeah, I was thinking, maybe the next meeting, you set us out some time to go through each waiver, and that now we have the benefit of having, you know, Bill's advice, and we've got our own thoughts. That's typically how we do it, is before you close a hearing, you kind of jump through all the waivers, and that generally leads to conditions, the language conditions that we could add to the decision.
Okay. Prior to the next meeting, can you get us focused on, let's say, the most important ones, there are certain waivers that are automatic, I don't think we have to have to, or some of them. But the more important ones, like the one we've just discussed, if you can flag the ones that need our attention.
Yeah. In fact, I think it might make sense for me to start drafting the decision. And, you know, the main, main part of the decision is the waiver table. So I can draft that table with, it's basically three columns. The first column is the bylaw issue, then the second is the waiver request, and then the third column is the board's decision. And so that's always, you know, blank. But then it just creates a nice organizational flow, you just go through it one by one and-
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just if I may, on that point, we're in a bit of a unique situation where we have a development team that has done a forty B project in town before, and we've gone to great lengths to negotiate and sort of draft a permit for that decision. And obviously, this, this project has unique concerns that will need to be drafted and addressed. But rather than recreate the wheel with a new decision, perhaps we could at least start with the framework of the decision that was used for this particular applicant's other project.
You want to share that with Dan, so that he can use that as a template?
Sure, I'd be happy to, if that's-
Do you have a word?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Chris, what am I missing, anything? Okay, we're going to get to that in a second, but in terms of this-
For tonight. I think for tonight, you have it.
Okay.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, yes.
Sidewalk and emergency access.
Okay. The applicant shall file with the ZBA and beta the design plan for proposed off-site sidewalk along Rockwood Road, and shall obtain and provide to the ZBA any feedback or receipts from the Norfolk DPW. Bishop, do you want to, okay, this is the number seven. The applicant shall file with the ZBA and beta the design plan for the proposed off-site sidewalk along Rockwood Road, and shall obtain and provide to the ZBA any feedback or receipts from the Norfolk DPW, if you want to give us an update on that.
I didn't submit a plan, and I didn't meet twice with the DPW commissioner and director. And he said that he will, DPW would be glad to do that if I take care of other issues that he has someplace else. You tell me what you wish me to do. He said this is something easy for him to do, but he has some other issues on some other corners in town that are difficult for him, that if, that if I help him there, he is happy to take care of that small area there.
Okay, so I think you're referring to, so that everybody is familiar, I think Mr. Miggy is referring to the intersection of Boardman and Rockwood.
That's correct.
He has some concerns at that intersection and-
Has visibility issues.
Visibility issues and the school bus traffic coming out of there, I think he has some concerns with that intersection.
He wants me to do some traffic analysis on it, and possibly cutting trees and reducing- He wants me to do some traffic analysis on it and possibly cutting trees and reducing the, there's like a hill, just taking it out.
Okay, now that, taking that hill out, is that town property or will that require an easement from-
He said that he has talked, he had talked to the owner of the property and he obtained whatever it is that he needs to do that.
Okay, so that the board and everybody here is privy to that conversation with Mr. McGee, is there some, perhaps, maybe we should have Bob come next week and explain what he has in mind and what he's looking for you as the applicant to do to improve the safety of that intersection?
Alternatively, I'm happy to do the sidewalk as, but he felt that it would be more helpful to the town, when we're beneficial to the town, if I did that corner and he did this in the sidewalk.
Okay, alright, why don't we-
So what documents, what the sidewalk's going to look like, does Bob have to present the plans?
The DPW has the design for the sidewalk, it sounds like Bob is willing to, they put in sidewalks every summer, willing to put that sidewalk in, in exchange for us some work to be done by the applicant at that intersection. He has some concerns, which are coming from the superintendent.
That's interesting, but having Bob's commitment that he's going to do the sidewalk the way it's documented is what we're looking for.
Yes, oh yeah, yeah, he'll do, it's those specifications, yes. Alright, so, does that make sense to everybody, do you have Mr. McGee come in?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if he could maybe put in writing what he's talking about when, before he comes in, so we can be prepared to talk to him.
So maybe a timeline?
Yeah. Did he say when that work would be done, that sidewalk work?
He said this year.
Summer of 2018 or?
That's good.
When would you expect to start construction of this project?
A year from now.
Okay, so.
Okay, so I'll put it on my to-do list to contact Mr. McGee, have him put in writing some of his thoughts and to memorialize the conversation that he had with you, present it to the board, so that the abutters can see what the conversation was all about and have him come in and kind of elaborate on what he has in mind for that intersection. Okay, alright, does that make sense to everybody?
Yep. Question in the back.
This gentleman right here.
Ed Nolan, 5 Medway Branch. Can you tell me why Bob McGee doesn't put that in his budget right now? That's an existing problem that he has. That's, I don't think we should be mixing apples and oranges here, okay? The other problem I have is what happens if Bob McGee has a bad winter and he runs out of money and he's got a tight budget? That sidewalk may not get done for a few years. If he has a site problem right now, which he does according to what we've been told here with the buses, then put it in his budget, get the, you know, the cost of the traffic assessment done and get it done. That's, that to me is mudding up the waters here. This is not something these people are, should be involved in, in my opinion.
The traffic flow around this whole area is something that we're looking at and just as the abutters have raised issues about this project, the superintendent has raised this issue, and so we're not going to ignore her and her comments and her thoughts. So we're going to see what we can do to help resolve some of the issues that she has.
You know, I don't know if there's some misunderstanding, but it's, I think that's a concession on the part of the applicant-
Yes.
-to help with what is a more complex issue than, this sidewalk would be a direct linkage to this development, so that would be an obvious one, but apparently there's something that's more offsite that the town has asked the developer, listen, you know, rather than that, how about you help with this? So, you know, the developer's making a concession and doing that, that's an additional benefit.
We've done this before, yeah, we've done this before, yeah. Chris?
So I realize that this is something that has been done in the past and, but I think that this site is, and this particular sidewalk is something that has been part of this discussion the entire time, is that that was how we were conducting all of these people out of this development safely, not directing them over the MBTA tracks, which is a present condition that we have right now, which is commuters are walking illegally or not down that path and crossing over MBTA property. If we don't put in that sidewalk as part of this development, we're compounding an already existing problem and making it worse. I think, I agree that the Rockwood Road project needs to, that he's referring to the corner, it is an area that needs to be addressed, but this one, specific to this project, I think the two are handcuffed together, just my opinion.
We're not suggesting the sidewalk will not be done, it will be, and we'll get a commitment from Mr. McGee to do the sidewalk-
Yeah.
-in conjunction with the project. That was not the intent to delay the sidewalk, it's just the town will do it instead of the applicant, that's the only thing we're talking about here.
No, absolutely, but my only point is, is that sidewalk projects are ones that are frequently pushed to the side when budgetary concerns become a problem. You can look all over town, right down on Medway Branch, there's 600 feet of sidewalk that stops at the senior center and doesn't go all the way down to connect to one of the largest neighborhoods in all of Norfolk, the Cape Cod Estates. So I hear you saying, oh yeah, it's coming, we're going to do it, but, you know, budgets get in the way and things don't happen, so this particular sidewalk, where it's so small and such a relatively small area and it's so impactful on the safety of the people that are going to be living in this neighborhood, it's an important thing to stay paired together with this project. I understand Bob's got lots of priorities and places he's trying to put them, this particular sidewalk should stay with this particular project.
And just to add to that, as part of adding this development and the profit that you will make, if that's going to make Rockwood Road and Boardman Street safer, why wouldn't we just ask for that in addition versus swapping out? Is this, is this common practice, just curiously?
We're discussing, we're having conversations, nothing's been decided.
I know.
We're discussing all this with the DPW and that's why we're bringing, you know, tonight out, so everyone can know what's being discussed.
So is the next step a formal presentation from the DPW?
I think that's, that's what we just said, Mr.-
On both that intersection?
Mr. McGee will be here next, at our next meeting to talk about this, yes.
The 20th of September.
As a formal, I'm asking as a formal presentation, not a discussion.
He'll do what he has to do, yeah. He'll be prepared to discuss this and-
Costs all of the engineering and all of that?
Yeah.
So there's a tight timeline for these permits?
If we need an extension, I'm sure the applicant will be more than happy to grant one. Okay, any other questions on this topic? Alright, so we've done sidewalks, everything else. The other item on the agenda tonight as it pertains to this project is the emergency access road. Let's see here. Where's my notes? Okay. One of the things, we're at a point, I think, just for everyone's information, we're at a point in the project where we think the project's in a good place, we still have some issues that will get worked out. One of the, we wanted to wait until the layout was set, the roadway was set, and one thing that we've always had in the back of our mind is an emergency access road into the project, not so much for the, the project standing by itself is safe and we're not worried about that, but we've got an opportunity to make it a little bit safer, not only for this project, but for residents and the abutters. And one of the things that we've been thinking about for some time is taking advantage and putting an emergency access road from the cul-de-sac out to Boardman. And the purpose of that emergency access, given the constraints of this project, we're happy it's here, we like the density downtown, but with density comes issues of public safety and, thank you, that's the diagram that we're talking about, the roadway we're talking about right now. We'd like to request, the board will be making a request to the board of selectmen to use that road as an emergency way in and out. One of the things that we have in the back of our mind is River's Edge. River's Edge is a development over on the other side of town where they had a major explosion, required 40 or 50 emergency vehicles, fire trucks, police, ambulances, et cetera. And it may never happen, we never, may never have a major emergency there, but we think of worst-case scenarios, someone's having a heart attack, a baby's choking, the train tracks are down, a train is stalled on the tracks, the buses are down at the intersection, you know, again, worst-case scenario, the public safety people will find a way in, I'm sure they will, even in that worst-case scenario, but we have an unique opportunity here just to make this a little bit safer for the community and some of the abutters. By proposing this access road, it not only helps the people of this resident, of this project, but Hillcrest Village, if they have to get into Hillcrest Village in an emergency, they can use this road. It's all town-owned land. Our request to the selectmen will be that this is only a 14-foot wide road, standards in Norfolk are 22 feet, so we don't ever want to see this road used as an entrance or exit. It will be gated at all times, so nobody can use the road. And again, we've got a unique opportunity to make this project just a little bit safer and so the board is going to discuss tonight this proposal and, you know, suggest to the board of selectmen that they consider they can do this in a contract form to use this for emergency purposes. We've met with the public safety officials, they feel it would be beneficial. Again, not completely necessary, but again, unique opportunity just to make this a little bit safer, so we can all sleep a little bit better at night and shame on us if we don't try it, the selectmen may turn it down, I don't know what they're going to do, but I know that this board will sleep a little bit better at night knowing that we tried to provide an extra layer of safety. This will come out near Kid's Place and it could potentially tie into the Kid's Place, the town wants to renovate that area into some sort of a park, the road will go through the parking lot, so the paving done by the applicant would help the town out quite a bit as well. So that's the general concept behind this and I'll open this up for questions from the board or from the applicant. And then we'll take questions from folks.
Mike, is this paved?
It's currently not paved.
Are you asking for it?
We're asking for it to be either-
Be paved.
Paved, yes, or some sort of surface that can support the apparatus.
It's 25 feet paved at the entrance right now and then it goes to a gravel, so it would be paved from the street, Boardman Street, a curve, all the way in to the property, the cul-de-sac.
See, we would be asking the applicant to pave it?
Pave it 14 feet.
From Boardman Street?
Correct.
So, okay.
But just, that decision isn't ours. I mean, we can recommend to the selectmen that we want, we'd like to see the road paved and they may say, you know, we think we can do a hard surface that will support the fire apparatus, that's not our judgment call, we're going to make that recommendation, but again, that's not, that's above our pay grade.
So I think you could frame this as a condition on the project, you could say the applicant shall, subject to the approval of the board of selectmen, install a 14-foot paved emergency access road to the gate, that that road will be maintained by the Future Homeowners Association, plowing and so forth.
Would that be done with a vote by the ZBA?
What, excuse me?
Would that be done by, with a vote by the ZBA? In other words, would individual members say, I am in favor of this, I oppose this?
Yeah, that's what we're doing today, we're having a discussion and then we're going to vote to recommend it to the selectmen, pronounce it, recommend it.
So I have some questions.
Alright, hang on. Alright, other questions?
My only comment was, would be just if we can use, you know, some other material other than pavement, just my only comment.
For drainage benefits?
Just drainage and suspended saws and solids and everything.
Yeah. The issue with the fire chief is obviously getting the fire apparatus in there and not have it ever get stuck.
Yeah, I think there's other alternatives-
But that's, that's the big issue.
-that could potentially be looked at as an alternative to pavement.
Would this road be town property? This is already town property, yes.
So this paved, this paved portion of it would be town property, so it would not be the responsibility of this development to maintain this?
Yes.
It would be.
Yes, it would be. Condo Association will plow it and maintain the road.
Ask that again, I'm confused now. It's on town property and yet-
The selectmen would give a license or an easement of some sort, which would have to be worked out, but the selectmen would authorize that to the applicant and then the successor condo association to allow them to use this town land as their access road. And, but they would be responsible for maintaining the access road itself, but the town would retain the fee interest in that land.
What about the restriction that it'd only be used in emergencies and there's supposed to be some metal-
Yep.
Yes, that's still going to be part of our motion.
That would be part of the issue.
I understand that, but once it moves from the town to the applicant to the ongoing condo association, then who controls that access? Do they, since they're now maintaining the road, they decide they can just open up that access?
No, the condition in the permit would be that, and also potentially a condition on the board of selectmen's approval would be that that gate has to be locked, it can only be opened by fire police, DPW and the condo association manager, that it cannot be opened or used for general access.
In perpetuity, would that be forever?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of course, for as long as the project's there.
In terms of, and just to define, maintaining that road, does that include plowing and so forth and then ultimately at some point replacing the road?
Yes. Perpetual maintenance.
Perpetual maintenance.
For the town.
Yep, they're saying for Bishop.
For the condo association.
Ultimately for the-
For town property.
They would be responsible for maintaining the road that's on the town property because the town is giving a license for them to build the road and you inhabit.
Would the town ever be able to sell that property?
Sure.
So they could sell Kid's Place even though there's an easement for the condo association?
Potentially, if anything's possible.
It might limit their options as to what they can do with that. What's that?
How can you sell an emergency road? I mean, the whole purpose of it-
This is purely hypothetical, there's no plan to sell it. I don't-
Well, none of us are going to be here in 20 years.
I just mean, if it limits the town's ability, what they can do with town property.
True.
And what about the current situation, that there are many members that enjoy, you know, the walk over there, they utilize it, they go back and forth legally or not, so...
Well, that's something, so that's something the selectmen could negotiate, they could say, we're going to let you build this road here, but you've got to allow people to be able to walk on it, not necessarily to go to their project, but to walk, I don't know where you'd walk to, there's nothing to walk to, right? But if there's, if there is someday something to walk to, then the selectmen could put that as part of the condition of the license.
And if I slip and fall on the property, I sue the condo association?
You could sue anybody you want.
Hypothetically, right.
Whether or not you're going to win is another question.
Exactly. I'm just trying to define where the liability falls.
I think that the selectmen should get some advice from town council on the real estate issue, because that, there is a question there in my mind as to what rights the selectmen have to grant these kind of licenses or easements, with or without town meeting approval, so I think that's something that-
Town council's already ruled that they do have the authority to grant this sort of a contract, it can be for three years, five years, in perpetuity, they can do whatever they want.
With or without town meeting?
Without town meeting.
Without town meeting.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question? That is a, the leaching field, part of that property is the leaching field for Hillcrest Village?
Correct.
That whole, right?
Part of it is.
I know, you walked through it, there's big, so how does that impact that? I mean, has this been thought through from an engineering perspective? I know, Mr. Glusa, you really want that access. I'm not sure, I don't know if it's the length of this cul-de-sac or we don't want to set a precedent that we would allow a cul-de-sac of this length in this town for maybe other future projects that come through? And that could be a way to say, hey, no, you can't do this one over here because we made this person do this over here, but, so has that part been thought through, that this can actually be done?
So the existing septic system, the tanks are right here, these are the apartment buildings.
Wake her up, wake it up. Just in time.
Now you see it, now you don't.
Be careful with this laser beam. So there's the tanks and the pipe is, goes up here to, the leach field is right here, it's labeled, it might not be clearly shown, but this is the label, this is where the actual leaching field is up here, so it's through this pipe over here.
So that pipe goes under the road right there or something?
Yeah, right. It wouldn't touch this emergency access road.
It is a part of the path.
It follows the path, this pipe follows the path more or less.
Where's this road going to start on Boardman Street?
At the old Kid's Place playground.
At the old Kids Place playground.
Okay, where above still?
Right at the old Kids Place playground.
Yeah.
And the driveway?
At the entrance, it's there now.
That means you've got to come down, make a 90-degree left turn.
With your fire truck.
Left turn, and come all the way across Kids Place property, and then make some sort of a right turn and follow the path down to the railroad tracks.
Has the fire chief written a letter or some documentation that the residents can see that he wants?
That he's in favor of?
That he's in favor of this and the design, and will use it?
Yes, yeah, I mean, we...
You have that from the fire chief?
Can you give me a chance to answer my questions before you jump down my throat, please?
Sure.
Thank you. We met with the chiefs, two chiefs, and the DPW this week, and rolled this out to them to get some feedback from them. It's a work in progress. Generally speaking, they think it's a good idea. They like it, they support it, but that's the point we're at right now.
No letter?
There's no letter been written yet. We've been discussing this. We wanted to bring it out into the public to let everyone know what we're talking about. And that's, and that's part of the process that we're going through right now. Yes, sir.
What about using Hillcrest? And put a breakaway gate at the end of Hillcrest, said you can go either way. You need to get into Hillcrest, you go through Bishop's property. If you go, need to get to Bishop's property, go through Hillcrest. Bishop, you have to spend extra money.
Thirty-five.
It's already paved, and I believe you've been doing something with the water.
You follow that through Hillcrest?
I mean, it's up to...
You just want to make a leg onto Hillcrest, is what you're saying? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's other options. Bishop doesn't have to pave a road all the way down, you know?
That nobody, that no one's ever going to use. Such a huge road.
Is there a second entrance to Hillcrest? I'd like to ask.
No.
I don't believe there's a second entrance to Hillcrest.
No, but if you look at their plan, they show a loop, and they show, there's a spot in between the two buildings where, like, if you look at some of them, there's like a proposed spur that comes off of there, I think, for the potential for future development down the road. But even more importantly, there are, I think, the, this same board, or maybe it was the other board, I believe it was the same engineer on the Boyd Crossing, came before the selectmen on the 108, 106, 108 Main Street, and said, "Hey, we would like, we have a similar project, similar cul-de-sac that exceeds the limit. We have town-owned property, which is the Old Town Hall. We'd like to propose using that as a spur for emergency access," which frankly laid itself out even better. It was already paved. It directly abutted the property, ran right along the side, and the board of selectmen said definitively, "No." They felt that it limited the options of the town, felt that it limited the options of the town as far as what they could do with that property in the future. They mentioned Kids Place in that particular conversation, and I think they turned it down flatly. Is that correct? You were the engineer, weren't you?
Yes.
Yeah, and they said no, right?
Yeah, I think it was...
And I think they encouraged you to seek out private developers that you could address. In other words, they said, "Hey, go see some of the abutters that are against them, because you have other options for that." And that's the exact same situation we have here, Mr. Kaluza, is that this property directly abuts Mr. Quaglieri's property that we talked about earlier today. His property directly abuts this. There's an option there for Mr. Bishop to go directly to him and work out a private arrangement that doesn't involve giving up the town of Norfolk's property and limiting us. I just don't understand what the agenda is to tie up the town with a private developer. Again, a private developer who's putting this in. So I hear you're on the safety thing, but if you look there, there's an access road there that when I spoke to the fire chief, he said, "No problem. I can get down that road anytime," which is what Hillcrest Village has been relying on all these years. So to put in this convoluted 90-degree turn, I don't know, I don't know if I buy it. Doesn't seem legitimate.
That's up to the selectmen to decide. We're going to...
Can I just ask a question? At the very beginning of this project, Mr. Hashem actually had a plan that you, that paved that road out to Boardman. I said, "Okay, this is where we're going with this." I came forward and said, "Hey, if we're going to do this, why don't we create something for this great downtown development? Create a pedestrian way? Make it something that benefits the town, and it's the emergency access." And nobody, no interest from this board at all on that. And we sent Mr. Hashem back multiple times to redesign the plan.
Which he did.
So I'm just confused why, sort of in the 11th hour, this funky, which feels like, "Let's go avoid the Henry property, because they're loud on this issue, and we'll go through Kids Place," which we still don't know what the future of that is. So I'd like to know the vision from you, Mr. Kaluza, and then I have already addressed the board of selectmen at the last meeting where this was put on the agenda, apparently inappropriately, and they took it off the agenda, but I went anyway to talk about this exact issue that I brought up months ago. So why the change? And why this design? I would like an answer specifically to why the change of decision, when I came and said, "Okay, here's a developer coming in. This is supposed to be smart growth. This is about bringing people downtown. Hey, I've got this great idea." Nobody bit on that, and he went back and redesigned the plan. And now, so I want an answer to why that wasn't supported by the board, if you really felt like emergency access was important, because it was on his original plan. And now, why this funky design?
We originally started out with looking at Midway Branch as the emergency access, and that seemed to have its own issues, and then...
Which are? For full transparency, so I can understand and get behind a decision, you might...
Ownership of the land was in question, whether the town owns it, whether Mr. Quiglieri owned it. There were a lot of issues surrounding...
And that still does, that's still not the case.
Can I answer the, you asked me a question. Can you give me an opportunity to answer it, please?
Yes, I will.
You're done?
Are you?
Yeah, are you done? Thank you. We started out looking at Midway Branch, and that seemed to have some legal issues about who owns it, whether it's Mr. Quiglieri or the town. So we abandoned that approach, and then this idea came up. The town owns the land. It's cleaner, easier. We've always been, you know, because of the location of this project, which we like, it's high density, which we want from our master plan, we've always, you know, one of the things we always look at at 43, 40B projects is the safety of it. And we've always felt that this project would be a better project for surrounding, for the community and for the folks that live here, if we had another way in. It's quite simple. There's nothing complicated about it.
But for Hillcrest Village, that's never been a concern for the town? For our seniors or low-income families?
Well, we never had a project here before, and Hillcrest Village has nothing to do with us. But in this case, it happens to benefit them. So, I mean, there's an ancillary benefit, not only to the town, the people that live in, at 25 Rockwood and Hillcrest Village. So it all ties in together.
So why the design? So Mr. Quaglieri owns the end of Midway Branch, but not the part that you're showing on this diagram? Or the, there is some confusion of who owns that?
There was...
His property is further up.
Yeah, that's why we abandoned the Midway Branch approach. It just, it was too confusing as to ownership. There were ownership issues and...
You have the same issue with the ownership issues as he raised along that point.
From the information we have, there aren't the same issues.
It's not the same road?
No, it's not Midway Branch.
Oh, okay.
How, how is that Midway Branch?
I'm confused.
Not Midway Branch. Let's...
It's the same path. You're just cutting through Kids Place.
Right.
And Mr. Quiglieri's issue...
They're going, they're going from the land to Kids Place, which is town-owned, right to Bishop's property. I don't think the drawing identifies it properly, but the idea was...
Quaglieri's property right there.
Both of us can't talk at the same time. So either I talk or you talk. Okay?
Sure.
The plan is from town-owned land to Bishop's land. It crosses over the cart path. It has to cross over the cart path. So 14 feet wide will cross over to Bishop's corner. That is what the plan should be. This plan shows much more exaggerated, but that's what the plan calls for. It doesn't call to go to Mr. Quiglieri's, which also, the problem with Mr. Quiglieri's and your plan, which was a great plan, was the MBTA. If you recall, we tried to get the MBTA out here to put together a bridge, to work on the road adjacent to the fence. Why Ray was here, they dropped the ball. They didn't want to deal with us, and nothing happened to that. And that's why that plan, which was probably the ultimate plan that would have been great for everybody, failed, is the MBTA had no interest in building a bridge. They had no interest of working against the fence to help us, and that's why that project had to be stopped.
But I, I said, "Let's just spill it right out onto Rockwood Road." Not, I, I would never suggest...
How would it get to Rockwood from, how would it get to Rockwood from this right-of-way?
Mr. Bishop grants an easement for the same type of easement that you're proposing here, except on his property.
Okay, but that's, we can't control that. We can't force him to give us public rights to go through his property.
No, but you can say to him, "I want you to do it on town property." I'm saying, "Why can't he do it on his own property? Why couldn't he put that three-foot strip, instead of it running along and coming out this way, it connects and runs along his property?" So we're along that storm, you create a sidewalk, a public way, with a fence on one side that is MBTA, a fence that is on the other side that is Mr. Bishop's property, with a town-managed sidewalk that makes its way out and spills onto Rockwood Road. That's what we were proposing from the very beginning. It conducts all of those people and directs them directly down onto 115, onto that new sidewalk that Bishop's going to put in, and they walk up and across the tracks legally. As opposed to what we're creating here, is we're creating a town-owned path that these commuters are then going to walk on and then cross over illegally the MBTA tracks. I think that is a huge liability issue that we're, that you're asking the town of Norfolk to accept and taking the responsibility. I hear your point that you can sue anyone, but there's a difference when the town says, "We're going to get in bed with this private developer, and here's our path." I think you're paving that, you are inviting people to do that, particularly when you say you're going to snowplow.
I think we're confused. Right now, you can walk on town land to go to the train tracks. So you could stumble on a rock right now, or a branch, and sue the town. This road is not for pedestrians. This road is for emergency vehicles only. So your analogy of somebody walking on this path, this is not a path. There's a path there right now. There's 25 feet of asphalt, there's three concrete blocks, there's gravel that goes down to the cart path, which then leads to the MBTA. So your analysis is, you could fall on that today and sue the town of Norfolk, because they own Kids Place, so there's no difference from what exists now. This is an emergency access road only. It is hopefully never, ever will be used, and it may not be approved by the board of selectmen. It's just to make sure that if something happens that, we can't see it here, Unit 24, Unit 27, that we can get a fire apparatus in there if, for say, Boardman and Rockwood are blocked because of the train, because of the buses, what have you. That's all this is for. That's the only reason we're discussing this.
Isn't that an issue in multiple neighborhoods in this town? That if there's some random issue, something blocking something, or Boyd's Crossing, there's a backup somehow in front of that, and there's an emergency?
They are. Every one of these are issues. But that doesn't mean we ignore them.
Well, you did there.
That doesn't mean we ignore them.
But you did there.
You know what? I can't change the past, but I can use the past to determine the future, and that's what I'm doing.
So are we going to see a vote for who is in favor of this and who not?
Okay. Any other discussion from the board? Any questions, comments?
Can I just ask, is this not an accurate depiction? Mr. White, you had said something that this wasn't quite accurate?
I think, my understanding is, maybe Jim can shed some light. I'm not going to put you on the spot. But if you go, you know Kids Place where that gravel, how does that connect to Bishop's property? Am I missing something, or is it, is this depicted a little bit exaggerated?
Okay, this is the existing paved entrance off of Boardman, and this is the gravel parking that's there. And there's kind of a path through here, but this is the existing tree line along the edge of the gravel, so we were taking the most direct route to get to this gravel.
Why can't that straight?
Yeah, how come not straight?
This is a first cut at it. If the board wants to see something different, we're open to suggestions, but this is first pass.
Okay.
Just for the record, there was, somebody brought, or raised a question about the ownership of this property here, and we supplied, we did the research and supplied the town, and whoever questioned it with the documentation to show that the town actually owns that property, not Mr. Alquaglieri, who was, somebody made the assertion that maybe he owns it. He does not. The town does own it.
Okay.
That little triangle in between the...
The cart path.
The road. Oh, okay. So, but why wouldn't you just go straight out? I don't understand why you'd make that funny turn. That seems like an emergency access.
I think Jim was saying, he was using the cart path. He was using the existing cart path. You could cut that line straight through the tree line.
You'd be cutting more trees.
Yeah.
Trying to make use of the existing...
But can a fire truck make that turn?
Absolutely.
Why not straight out the cart path?
Yeah, well, it was my car. Go on the cart path.
Because the Henrys have made a big stink about that. Right? Am I right?
You said it.
I said it, right? So let's, let's avoid their, their problem, and maybe they'll go away if we make this funky other turn. It just feels, it feels very frustrating that we're at this point in the process.
This late in the game.
And this is the idea that we've come up with.
Why don't come with this proposal at the beginning? That's what I am suggesting.
Are there other alternatives to, to that scheme in terms of the road that we can look at, Jim?
If the preference is to straighten it out, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
So you're suggesting just make it more of a straight line right across here?
No, I'm saying, why don't you go straight out the cart path?
Yeah, how come you did, how come, yeah, why'd you make it through Kids Place?
All right, why don't we look at some...
Is that what you're, I just want me, is that what you're asking for?
I'm asking why...
Is that your...
No, I'm asking why...
What do you want?
I want no access road.
Okay.
I think it's there already. That's my answer, is I think it's there already. If you go and you talk to the fire chief, he will tell you, "That's my fire access. That's where I'm coming from."
So just we understand what your position would be. You would rather not see any paved road at all?
Well, no.
Is that right?
No, my position is the same that it was from the very beginning, which is that I think that that is an issue, that people are traveling through there, and they are crossing over MBTA property, and we have, and we've got an issue there.
The idea of giving away town-owned property to a private developer, I find personally offensive. I don't see a reason for the town of Norfolk to give something to a private developer when there are other options out there that are available. So if you tell me, oh, it's about safety, I say, ah, then make him go somewhere else.
So the other option you're suggesting is through the Housing Authority property, is that right?
I'm saying that there are lots of other options there. The Housing Authority is also the town of Norfolk property, so now that wouldn't be my first choice.
Not perfectly, that's actually not correct. It's a different entity that they would have to negotiate with, not the Board of Selectmen.
But I just meant that there are other options that are outside of there. There are other abutters, like I said, Mr. Quiglieri's property being one. It's the only one that I know of that directly abuts that property. It would be an easy way in and out for him to be able to get that. It would improve that site as well. If there's gotta be an emergency access, I think the private developer should find it privately.
Okay.
I don't think he should go through the town of Norfolk. I just don't understand why we would do that.
I think the board has your position, heard it very clearly. I think we should move on.
Yes.
Okay. All right. The other thought is, I mean, do we want to revisit using the Medway Branch? I mean, that opens up, they're already walking down that to cross the train tracks anyways.
Right, right.
So we make it easier for them.
How about you talk to the chief?
How about you be quiet for a minute, sir?
This is a public hearing.
Yes, I'm talking, and I don't want to be interrupted by you again, and I have the authority to have you removed. No, it's not, you have to at least have some respect. I'm talking. I don't want to be interrupted by you. We've listened to you for five months, loviate, and shoot your big mouth off. Now, be quiet.
Wow, sir.
Be quiet.
You've gotta remember who you are here representing, and that's the town of Norfolk, sir.
Yep.
And the citizens.
Yep, and we do.
That's who I am, and that's what I'm here doing.
Yep.
I'm asking the questions you're supposed to be asking.
Yep.
Yeah.
Don't interrupt me again.
You have a wonderful night.
The, so if we, is the Medway Branch an option at all?
Well, the cart path would be another option, is using that cart path and not going through Kid's Place.
Not going through Kid's Place. I mean, if the issues, the legal issues are cleared up as Bishers indicated, is that a better solution?
Well, certainly it opens up Kid's Place to being sold as a, takes the town property. If the town owns this cart path, as Bishers said, that could be used.
When you say Medway Branch, do you mean now an extension?
It's really a cart path that borders Medway Branch and borders, if you call it Medway Branch.
Does that mean the path goes further?
Straight ahead, just goes straight out, between the two properties, between Kid's Place and the...
Has there been discussion about the town disposing this property?
No. No, no. The sense we get is they don't want to dispose of it. They want to keep it. They have...
It's a park or something?
Yes, for a park. They definitely want to use, keep that land, use that land. They have no intention of selling it. So perhaps we can present the Selectmen with a couple of options to look at in terms of exits out of here.
In terms of a license, I think two points. One, to what you were just trying to get at, is the exact location. If it's specified to be in the way of a floating license, where the location is floating, and it can be moved at the town's whim in the future, then you can draft a license that way. So it doesn't need to be fixed on the ground. I think from the town's perspective, floating would be the way to go. And from the developer's perspective, I think our position, and I think it was stated earlier, is that this is belt and suspenders. We've designed the project within tolerances for safety so that it could stand on its own, and so long as any condition is drafted that it's subject to the Selectmen's approval, and not necessarily a requirement for the development to go forward, then we're fine with whatever the board wants to approve.
And we are too. I mean, if the Selectmen turn it down, so be it. We just wanted to at least, you know, give it a try to see if there's an appetite on their part to improve the safety for the entire area, and they may say no. So that was our only objective, is to go down that road and see where it takes us. They have the final decision. Okay, I think we've exhausted the conversation. I move that the zoning board request to the Board of Selectmen to create an emergency access road over town-owned land abutting the applicant's project, or an alternative road, which would run from the project's cul-de-sac to the location of the former town playground, or alternative location, as depicted on the emergency road access plan prepared by the applicant and dated August 7th, 2017, to be amended with an alternative roadway. The ZDA support of this request would be conditioned on the road not exceeding fourteen feet in width, be constructed and maintained, snow plowing by the applicant, and consequent condo association, and be gated with access limited to police, fire, and public works departments. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
Any discussion?
I'd just like to make sure I understand, when you reread the motion, and you said "or alternative," is that what you added?
Yes, because I think we want to have the flexibility to add another access road in there before we go to the Board of Selectmen.
So we're not voting on this specific one?
Not that specific one, that's right.
Just we're voting really on, we are recommending an access road.
Right, right, right.
An emergency access.
Emergency access road, right. Meaning approval would be by the Board of Selectmen.
Right, right, and they may turn us down, and I don't know what they're gonna do, quite honestly, so, but, so anyways, do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Want me to vote on it?
Yes, yes or no?
Yes.
I agree with presenting to the board, yes.
Yes to present.
Yes to present.
Yes.
Yes to present.
Okay, thank you. It is unanimous. Okay, I think we're done for tonight. Do you guys want to deliberate the...
We have to do some minutes.
Do some minutes, and then deliberate the other hearing we had earlier tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Yes. For 25 Rockwood Road to 9/20/17 at 7:15 PM, to conduct business on 25 Rockwood Road, the comprehensive permit to be continued.
And do we need another extension? Chris? I believe we signed the extension for them. We're not even at the 100 minutes yet, are we? And we signed an extension for additional time already, but as indicated, as long as the conversation is continuing and we're working through details, you know, the board can have whatever time they need.
Before we, is there, do we have the date, Amy, offhand?
Yeah, the date was September 17th, and now October 16th.
Okay, so we're at October 16th now? Okay, so we're all set for now?
All right, so wait a minute, we're not doing this until October?
No, no, no. We have till October 16th.
Oh, we have until October 16th.
We have an extension till October 16th.
Okay.
One question, discussion about this, is that the next time we will talk about Rockwood Road will be the 20th of September?
The 20th of September.
Okay. Because we was talking before about next week, Bob McGee and stuff like that.
Well, we're on that subject. Do we have the following meeting scheduled then? Is that an option?
We don't have an October meeting yet.
No October meeting yet.
If we need one, Chris, we'll squeeze one in. We want to get this done before the 16th, if possible.
And I'll circulate another memo to everybody, just follow-up from tonight's meeting with the action items.
Okay, we need a second on the motion to continue the hearing? A second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's continued.
Before I leave, I would like to say that you do not insult people in the town. I understand that things get heated, people sometimes get a little upset. You could look at me when I'm hot and clear, sir.
Excuse me?
The respect that you have shown is really, I just can't believe somebody who's sitting on a town board would speak like that in a public hearing.
See ya, Mikey.
Okay, so, do, is there any one? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Joe did.
Let's take a five-minute recess. Can you turn the camera off, please?
Chris, can we have a five-minute recess?
Okay, we're back from our brief recess, and I believe there's no other business to be discussed this evening.
The minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Proving the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, there is. We need to do the minutes.
Two sets.
Two sets of minutes. Thank you.
July 7th and July 19th. Amy, we don't have July 26th.
No. We already covered that.
Sure.
All right, so I want to make a motion that we accept the minutes for July 5th, 2017.
Second the motion.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Are we doing any deliberations?
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
July 19th? I make the same motion that we accept the minutes for July 19th, 2017.
Second the motion.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Are we doing any deliberations?
What's the feeling of the board? Do you want to deliberate, Alquiglieri, or wait?
You just want them left out, you said, right? You want them left out, not in the folder?
For the morning, yeah.
Okay.
And so the purpose of this is to build a two-family. That's the purpose of this.
Is what?
To build a two-family, so there's no setback issues, there's no block, shape, size, frontage issues, nothing like that.
Nope. It's in the B1 district, and he is allowed, with a special permit, to take an existing single-family home, which he has there.
Yep.
And to make a, raise it and build a duplex.
Okay.
Which is what he proposes to do. So finding effects would be, it's in the B1 district.
Existing structure is a one family?
A single-family home, existing.
There's no commercial going on in this?
No.
Okay, but it's in a commercial?
He has the right, if he would like, to do commercial in the area.
Right, right, but I know we have the ability to put commercial on the first floor and residential on the second floor in this area.
So it's an existing single-family home?
Okay.
It's in the B1 district.
Right.
He's proposing a duplex.
Okay.
With a total of four bedrooms.
Okay. One septic system, right? One septic system.
One septic system to service both.
So the existing structures will be demolished.
Right.
And that includes the garage.
Right.
And the house.
And the house.
Again, nothing requires us to analyze the size of the current structure versus the size of the new structure. There's no analysis there.
No.
Right. Are there any setbacks at all for the B1 district?
There is no setbacks with this one, but there is setbacks. He does have setbacks because of where he's putting it on the property.
This is 15.7 feet from the lot line.
Right, but that's allowed in this district.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And again, he's not doing any commercials, so he's not looking for any special parking requests, or anything. He's just building two garages.
So this is just, this is just a special permit, then he still has to go to the town and get approval to build this?
He still has to go, he still has to go to the planning board.
Planning board, yep.
Planning board, everything.
Now, the access to it, though, the current access to the single-family home?
Is to the left of Bork's.
Right, right, but is it a paved access?
Oh, yeah, paved, and then it goes to stone.
All right, and he's just maintaining the same?
He's gonna use that, the existing driveway, yes.
Of the finding effect.
And it's Bork's.
It's Bork's, sorry.
Bork's, not Burks.
Bork's, Burks.
Bork's.
Yes, yes.
Where'd you come from?
Sometimes open on Sunday, sometimes not open on Sunday.
So to his line, there's no setback issue, you're saying, right?
Not in the B1 district.
Because it's a B1 district.
Right.
And what is the setback that he's looking at?
He said 15.7.
The rear is got 15 feet, seven inches.
Well, that's with or without the decks?
This is without, or without the decks.
That's without the decks.
Correct.
Finding effect will include the criteria and worksheet.
Right, as we covered earlier.
Do I actually sign the plan?
Sure.
I can look at the B1 district. I thought there were some setbacks. So there'll be no conditions on this?
Just the normal conditions, you know, construction, removal of the dumpster after thirty days, sixty days.
We don't go into the lighting and everything in the B1 district?
No, in this case, because our purview is just...
Allowing him to do the...
It does ask us, on a special permit, to, that lighting will not be offensive.
Offensive, right.
So is it, using the responses to the criteria sheet, cover that?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
We just say it won't be offensive. In some projects, we actually designate where the lights can go. Remember some of those bigger projects that we've done? We've said, this is where the lights will go, this is where they won't shine.
Agreed.
And this one is basically a request to demolish and build. And he has to get a special permit in order to do it. He can't just...
Just do what?
He has to get a special permit in order to do that, so it's really, just really, you know, but for the fact that it's gonna be a duplex, he wouldn't need us.
Right, right, well, he needs us because it is a duplex, so he has to... We just have to make sure it's in keeping with the community, in keeping with the area.
Mm-hmm.
And really, he's relying on Bishers project, because that's really where the residential development will occur, because you have Bork's is obviously not residential development. I think it's Peter Chipman's property, and the post office, you have the, you know, the post office is there, you have the little strip mall there.
Yeah.
So you don't have a lot of residential, except for behind him and to the left side of him, so it's, I think it's more in keeping with, he's staying residential, in keeping with the proposed property behind him.
If he wants, if he did want to incorporate a commercial component to this, would he have to come back to us again for another special permit?
Depending what he was gonna do, parking, similar to 18 Union Street, what is he gonna build?
Okay.
He has, obviously, he has a commercial building in back there as well, that's separate from Bork's, that he's looking at some point to develop as well.
Okay.
And depending on what he does with it, he may have to come to our board.
Okay. The schematics of the project appear to be in keeping with the character of Norfolk. The schematics that he showed us, that could be a finding effect.
Mm-hmm.
You mean the architectural?
The rendering, you mean?
The architectural view.
The architectural view, yeah.
Do we want to say something about the garage doors again?
I think he probably needs to dress those garage doors up a bit.
Put the planning board?
Yeah, that's probably in their purview.
That's in their purview.
Well, we can say to look at. Would he look at the current architecture of the front of the garage door?
Yeah.
We're not asking him, we're not asking him to change it. The planning board will give him direction.
Right, yeah, I know in some cases, like, you know, when you do the double-wide door, there's an issue when you go to the two separate doors, because you have to have that centerpiece and then more space.
It creates a problem for space, you know?
Well, there is a criteria, Chris, that asks us about, in keeping with the character of the zoning district, adequate appropriate facilities.
This is like a standalone residential structure.
Yeah, but the zoning district is a B1, so it's not like we're looking at...
All right, I was just looking for something that we might be able to hang our hat on, but if we can't, we can't. Okay, that enough finding effects?
Is someone living there now?
Yes. Oh, yeah, he rats it out.
Okay.
Yeah, because what he's asking for, turning into a two-family characteristic of residential and mixed use, so that's where he's within the district.
That's what he's referring to. And it could still be rental units too, right?
Yeah.
That's his, okay.
Mm-hmm. Anything else?
Do you have the normal conditions?
Mm-hmm.
You have the normal conditions?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, then, let's make a motion.
Make a motion to grant a special permit?
Make a motion to grant a special permit to Rockwell Realty 2 LLC pursuant of MGL Chapter 40, Section 9, amended in Section I, 7B of the Norfolk zoning bylaws, to allow the conversion of a pre-existing single-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling or to mixed business and residential use, property being located at 194 Main Street, S M 14, Block 49, Lot 14, in the B1 zoning district.
Second. Any discussion?
Okay, any discussion? All right, so let's vote, and you will either vote no to grant or yes to grant.
I don't vote on these, though.
You can.
Kenny?
Yeah.
We need five.
Yeah, you can vote. No reason why you can't get used to voting.
You get to vote?
Yeah.